I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please, mean everybody. Is this not on? All right, we will move on to the first item on our agenda, which is item number two, which is an executive session. Shannon.
I make the motion to enter into executive session pursuant to CGS 1-206 to discuss potential action regarding performance-related issues related to the budget involving Monroe Public Schools employees.
And we need to invite in?
Oh, and we invite in Superintendent Jack Sammery, Frank Connolly interim, and Joe Kabsa. Assistant Speaker.
Perfect, I have a second. Thank you, Nick. Any discussion by the board? All in favor? Great, thank you. We're in executive session. We'll be back. We're moving to the conference room.
I move that the Board of Education come out of executive session.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Great, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I hereby move that Mr. Connolly and Dr. Sammery immediately be placed on paid administrative leave with regard to an investigation of performance-related issues, including issues related to Monroe Public Schools budget.
I second.
Great. Any discussion? All in favor? Great. Shannon.
I'd like to make another motion.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Attorney David A. Ryan Jr. of Ryan &amp; Ryan LLC to investigate employee performance-related issues related to the budget involving Monroe Public Schools, as well as general performance-related issues, and to authorize the Board Chair to enter into a retainer agreement with Ryan &amp; Ryan LLC for the purposes of said investigation.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
I have one more motion.
Go ahead.
I motion to appoint Joe Kabsa as acting superintendent until further notice.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. All right. We will move on then to the budget workshop. All right. I think we left off, and correct me if I'm wrong, we left off at... Two thou- we were talking, I think, about, um... Were we in other professional sort? No, I'm in the wrong way. Hold on. Sorry. I think we left off on the dental insurance, correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
That sounds good.
Mm-hmm. Uh, that is page ninety-seven. He was gonna have, I keep forgetting this poor gentleman's... From Brown and Brown.
Oh, yeah.
What is it?
Chalk and Chusonin.
Chalk, okay. He was gonna go ahead and do a three-year review of that, correct, I think he said?
Yes.
To look back on that? To find out what's going on in the dental, right? I'm gonna go with he hasn't been able to complete that yet, right?
He did have numbers.
Oh, he did?
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay.
He did have, he did get his numbers.
Okay. All right. So, let's move on, 'cause we're kind of behind, so...
Excuse me, one second. On the, on the agenda, we had public participation?
Jeez, I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
Public participation. Sorry.
That's okay.
Went right over that. And, any public participation? Thank you.
Uh, Sukonah, Seven Georges Lane, I guess I have to do the same as town council, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You can come on.
Please sit, please sit up here. You need to be on the microphone, Si.
You can't hear me?
Teacher voice, yes.
Uh, I'm here to support a, an increase in the budget that will cover class sizes and all assorted things that the school needs. I think that for the last five or six years, the school budget has been underfunded, and I think it's brought you to a crisis point. And I, I think, you know, if it takes two referenda or three referenda to get the amount that you need, I think it's really, really important, you are the stewards of the, of the education for the town, and it's important that you stand up for whatever is needed. It seems to me it's worked kind of backwards, like you've been given a percent from the town, and they've told you what you can get instead of what you need. And I would like to see the education budget funded the way it should be funded. And if it takes three votes, then it takes three votes. And you know that's a tradition in this town. Thank you.
Yes?
Donna, um, can I make a motion that, because of the budget and the priority of that, that we skip number six tonight on the agenda?
We don't, we...
Or postpone it?
Yeah, we'll just postpone it.
What's the procedure for that?
No, just, we'll just skip right over.
Then I would draw the motion, then I just, okay.
We'll just skip over it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else for public participation? All right. Okay, let's go back to the budget. I apologize for skipping over that. Um, Joe, so if you can just maybe send out something to the board with, with that stuff and everything?
Probably have it over here somewhere.
I'm, possibly.
Good.
We'll go, we'll go through that. All right, next up is tax shelter annuity.
Donna, can you just say what page we're on?
Oh, I'm sorry, we're on ninety-eight.
Page ninety-eight.
Yes. Tax shelter annuity. It's the tax chargeback to Town Hall. Linda, do you know what that is?
Yeah, it's the, um, it's, it's the town's portion of it, part of it is a little bit lower than, it should be like fifteen thousand, because part of it gets billed back to the town, so it's the IT portion of the annuity.
Oh, so it's the IT portion of, okay. And I take it that that's what it's running, like last year it was fifteen, now it's at like twelve?
It's at twelve, yeah. It's, um, I think last year a couple thousand dollars hit their salary account instead of the annuity when it got billed back, and that's what there's been missing.
Oh, okay.
To tracking to twelve.
Twelve is the accurate, accurate number.
Perfect.
So, the, sorry Linda, so the increase is to properly budget this line item?
It's, it's actually a, yes, the increase is to properly budget the line.
Make it work, yeah, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Right. Thank you so much. All right, clothing allowance custodial, and I'm gonna go with that this is, well, I do know being on this bargaining, you know, this negotiation that there is a clothing allowance for our custodial staff, so I think that's pretty, this is just right in the terms of their, um...
Calculations are on there.
Yeah. Their, their contract. All right.
Yes.
Professional development reimbursement.
This is contractual reimbursements for, for administrative staff. So each, each of those lines is tied back to administrators, administrator, I mean, in the district.
Right, to the administrator's contract of the twelve hundred per person per year. And I do know that's correct, because I actually went through and did this calculation and stuff, so... That is right in line with that. Does anybody have any other questions with that?
Yeah, I just have one comment.
Yes.
I think if you look at like twenty nineteen actuals, I know that, I'm at the bottom of page one hundred.
Yes.
I know that twenty nineteen actual, um, it looks like it's under what was budgeted, but I think inside the lines, like some are way underspent, but some are overspent.
Right, it all depends if people put in for their reimbursement.
Right.
It's per contract, but not everybody necessarily will put in for it. They should, but they don't, you know, you don't have to spend it.
We gotta budget for the potential.
Right.
Right.
So you're budgeting to what the actual contract is? And what we have to follow, and if it, you know, it's one of those, you know, you have it, but if they don't spend it, they don't spend.
I'm just saying in some of the lines where we're over, like as we start approaching the budgeting numbers, we should just, you know, keep track of that, like...
Yeah.
As we get, as we approach those numbers in the fiscal year that we're in.
Gotcha.
That's all.
Gotcha. Can you just check, Linda, just, I think what, I think what Nick is trying to say is like for central office, it's over, the actual is over, so maybe just somebody's...
We've already done that. What we've done is, going forward, we've assigned...
Okay.
Specific people per line.
Perfect.
There was an overlap between system-wide and central office instead.
Gotcha.
Because there was, so some got miscalculated to different councils.
Okay.
They were assigned correctly.
Perfect, wonderful, so then that's all good. All right, any other questions on that? All right, we will move on to retirement.
Is that the...
So, this takes into account the most recent one, Joanne Higgins.
It does or does not?
Does, I think that's still needs to be adjusted.
All right, so that has to be addressed? But, I mean...
I don't know if, I don't know if you guys did that or not, but I know that what you have in front of you does not take into account Joanne Higgins.
But it would be like, but, but just correct me if I'm wrong, so with that, this will go up to whatever the terms are, right? But then the salary has, would go down, so it's kind of almost a wash, right?
Yep.
Pretty much.
Should be, yep.
So this is for who we have retiring this year and what their estimated payout is?
Right, for their accumulated time?
For their accumulated time.
That's what I was gonna ask, yep.
Yeah.
There's a little, there's a little decrease there, you see, from the department budget to the, to the superintendent's budget. Just one, one of the administrators graciously took her payout over two years.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Didn't need to do that.
Perfect. Yeah, so this will go up a little, but then salary line will go down a little to, to offset, 'cause you would be hiring at a lower rate. So we'll just need to do that, um, we'll just need to do that adjustment. Somebody just wants to take that note down. All right. We will move on to vacation buyback certified.
Donna, my question is if we're, we're paying it out in the retirement line, is that the same thing or is that different?
What's that?
This is, this is vacation buyback.
This is if, primarily this was superintendent myself that we're getting, um...
They can buy back.
We have so many days that we can buy back.
Okay, okay.
If we take off our vacation days, one of the things we needed to, needed to do, and I think finance was working on it, was it was all coded under the same line, you see, where it says vacation buyback superintendent, it said fourteen thousand. It needed, if you look at it, it was seventy-two, seventy-nine last year, and down below was sixty-seven oh four.
Yeah.
So that fourteen thousand just needs to be distributed between those two.
So that has to be fixed, right?
Yeah, and I don't know if it may have already been fixed.
Yeah, well, it will be fixed.
It will be fixed, okay, good. 'Cause that was my question, like, why is it all...
It was that one line, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, so Linda, you're gonna go ahead and fix that, please? Thank you. Anybody have any other questions there?
Not on that page, no.
Great. Um, vacation buybacks non-certified. So, is this, it looks like it says office personnel for a lot of them, is this...
No, this is for the, some of the non-certified, I don't know in the secretary's... It's contractual for, for certain people that, I don't, and then I don't know if the, in the secretary's bargaining unit, is there vacation buyback? There is?
Yes.
So it's secretary's, and then our affiliated admin assistants at the, at central office.
All right. All right. Anybody have any questions on this, Linda? All right. The next page is just the con, the continuation of that. So we will move on to FSA, which is the flexible spending. Now, does this still come into account with the new partnership two-point-oh plan?
I think the way this was explained was that the, because we're no longer in the high-deductive health plan within HSA...
Yeah.
That we had a lot of staff opt for the flexible spending account.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and this is the, this is the administrative fees that we pay benefit strategy, strategy monthly, eight hundred and ten dollars, or not monthly, quarterly, eight hundred and ten dollars to administer...
To administer that for us.
Yeah, that's based on, I think, I'm pretty sure it's based on actual.
Yeah, it's based on actuals, it's a quarterly bill.
Okay, perfect. Perfect. So, Linda, can I just ask you a question? You know how like we had gone through like the previous stuff and had crossed things out? Have those changes been made yet, do you know?
We haven't made any changes, we have it on the cut, the plus-minus list of the cuts, so...
Okay.
I think it's part of this, I think it's on the, the screen, or I don't know.
Okay. All righty. We're gonna actually go into the three thousands account, how great is that?
Let's keep moving.
Let's keep moving.
And I'll probably, moving forward here, definitely rely on the team for a lot of help.
Perfect.
I know a lot of professional services run...
Excellent. Well, if anybody knows, just call it out.
It's a workshop.
Yeah.
We're in a workshop, so we're just doing the best we can.
All right. Anybody know what the big, there was a big credit last year in the first line, consulted student, I guess that's Stephanie?
Yeah, it was, it was a credit memo, the nine thousand seven oh six, we're checking it, it should've hit the bottom line, it just hit the wrong account now.
Oh.
So it should've hit the, the curriculum writing external, there was a credit memo that was issued, and it just actually hit the wrong line.
Okay. All right. All right, how about the, the one that says magnet school? There seems to be a big drop-off there, is that, Sheila, is this some of the stuff you were talking about the first?
Um, not the magnet school, that's actually, that's me.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, right now, we budgeted only for one student. We have one student that's graduating this year.
Okay.
So we budgeted for the one that will remain there, but we did, in saying that, we just, last week, they identified a kindergarten at one of the magnet schools. So, in that case, we just pay those, we pay the services piece for that.
Okay, so is, so if somebody else is identified, is this gonna be sufficient? The ten grand?
Well, it depends on how many students.
Okay. But from what you know now, this is okay?
From what I know now, yes.
Okay. Alan.
Why does it say magnet schools testing?
Testing actually goes to the...
That's the next line.
That's actually the next, the word testing...
Oh, okay, I thought, all right. Yeah, okay.
And that's my line, that we used to test, the all-set test for three different grade levels. We're only giving it a third grade going forward, so that's why there's that decrease.
Darlene, is, other outside agencies, that's you, right?
That's me.
Okay, so, it, we're in line from two, the two thousand nineteen actuals and the twenty-twenty-one budget is pretty much in line, but does anybody know like why it was budgeted so low last year? Like, I mean, you're, the actuals to budget is pretty much in line.
I think, I believe, and Linda, you can help me out.
I believe too, but...
I believe that one, that was with excess cost taken out before.
Oh, so that's where excess cost was netted against? Okay, and...
During budget? Because it, are you talking about the four seventy versus this six forty?
Yes.
So when we budgeted, we budgeted without the excess cost grant in mind?
No, they, they're hitting different accounts now.
Oh.
They're hitting, um...
Tuition public and tuition private.
Tuition private.
I think just those two, right?
Tuition public and tuition private.
Yeah, it's not excess cost.
No, it's, we budgeted more, um, last year than this four seventy, but it was, excess cost was taken out of that number.
Right, so it's netted for excess cost, but next year we're not putting excess cost reimbursement to this line item, it's just going to public and private tuition.
Is that correct, Linda? There are two lines, right?
Yeah, but I don't think we used excess cost for professional services, or outside services last year either.
Okay.
So, I don't know why it's...
Oh, I think we hit three ones.
Did we? Tuition? Tuition sped, tuition public, and other professional services, but there was only like twenty-four thousand, so that's not...
Okay.
We gotta get some clarity on this one, please.
Yeah. I mean, it's in, we'll get some, if we can get some clarity, I mean, it is in line with the actuals, actual to what they're budgeting, but for some reason, the budget last, this, for this current year is, you know, way down, you know, I don't know why.
Right, but where, where is that, where is the rest of the money on it?
Right.
Where is it budgeted?
Correct.
Because when we did our update, when we do our spend updates, what we asked for in that line, um, last year is very close to what we are now.
Is it? So Linda, can you see, like, did they, can you see the budget from that, so you can't see the...
Well, I could, on that line, I just see what you see in the book right here.
Right, so you don't see any detail of how it was budgeted.
No, there's no detail, I have no idea.
So I'm gonna, and I, I wonder if there's anything up at the central office that has that. I'm gonna go with, I bet you they excess cost hit that against that when they budgeted last year.
I could check that for you, Donna, 'cause I have, I have, yeah, I have other people at, at the office that...
Perfect.
Last year's budget.
Perfect. If you could just let us know and get, and, and stuff, a simple email just so that we know.
Good.
Thank you.
We'll look at the last one on that one, too, curriculum writing.
Yep.
Yep, that's Sheila, oh yeah, I have that highlighted, I apologize.
Yep, that's me cutting, looking at our budget and just saying that we're just not gonna be giving as much professional development with some outside companies who were helping us support that. We're gonna do that internally on our professional development days and with the staff that we have.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right. One oh seven is just the total. Conference course registration fee, this one I have like highlighted all over the book.
This is an area that we've been kinda looking at, and I know elementary principals are doing a lot of work on this. I think these numbers may change a little bit, just to try to get a little bit more equity and, you know, get them, get them aligned a little bit more right now. I think where we're paying things out of for, this was, this was for conference course fees. This is, a staff member comes here, wants to go to a reading workshop, or wants to go somewhere, this is where you take it out. But I think, you know, traditionally, I, you know, the different schools have, have used different places, conference course fees, or professional development money, so these are kind of out of whack, and I know Bruce, Becky, and Kelly are doing a lot of work to try to, um, the, we have to adjust these, so they're, so they all jive.
Okay, so ideas, so, okay, so first, let's go to the first item, which is the CAFE CAPS conference. Could we comfortably say we can get rid of this and the board is not going?
Yeah, zero it out.
We're zeroing that out.
Take the twelve hundred, all right.
That's eight hundred.
Eight hundred.
The board doesn't need to go to that, quite honestly, and use this.
Can I just flag one thing for that line?
Yes.
That in years, I, it's okay to zero it out, I'm comfortable zeroing out, zeroing it out this year, but in years, in election years where you have new board members?
Oh, no, 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 this is not, this is not new board member orientation, this is the CAFE conference that is held in Mystic every November, where it just, you know, has workshops for a day.
'Cause I know that Joe and I went to that CAFE thing, so I don't know if...
That's different.
I don't know if that came out of this line.
That's different.
Okay.
This is the CAFE conference.
A different line? 'Cause I know there were fees for us to go.
Right.
But anyway, I just wanna make sure that in years, that go forward, in case that's in there that we...
Yeah, this one specifically set, highlights the CAFE CAPS conference for two board members. So what this is, is they have a conference every year in Mystic, it's like the third Friday and into Saturday, and it's like a full day on Friday and just a half day on Saturday.
Right.
Yeah, but that's different from the orientation.
Okay.
But the next question is, is the orientation money bundled into that line?
'Cause I see this year's budget is seventeen thirty.
No, because it's four hundred dollars times two for eight hundred dollars, so it's just that conference.
The current fiscal year has seventeen thirty in it, so I just wanted to make sure that, that the conference Joe and I went to isn't hitting that line, and if it is, that in next year's budget, when we have an election, we put money back in in case there's new board members, 'cause it was really helpful.
It was good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so is any of this contractual? Any of these things contractual?
These ones are not contractual.
None of it is?
No.
All right, then, Donna, I view this as a lever that we can pull?
Yep.
And what I'd like to, to see is if we can go back and see which on here are the most value-add, the ones that we think we need to do, or we need to budget for?
Yep.
And I'd like to see which other ones we can zero out.
Yeah, because it is...
Let's prioritize the, everything that's on here.
Right, 'cause last year in two thousand nineteen, we spent twenty, almost, just shy of thirty thousand, but now it's almost fifty-six thousand, so I think that that's an opportunity. Not that we don't want people to go, but given our financials, you know...
It's, if it's all, if it's optional, right?
Part of the reason why it was low is we were on, we were on a freeze.
Understood. Okay, so but, going a step beyond that, right, which ones are, are ones that, that the district feels we need to, we need to exercise this year?
Right.
And which ones can we expend?
Right.
And there was an answer from the administration on this, um, in our Q and A sheet about...
Oh, great, what page?
We've gotten so many, so I'm working off of the biggest one.
Okay, perfect.
Is there a date on the top?
Like on page one on the chart?
Is it the one with thirteen pages?
It says, yes.
Okay.
Questions from December sixteenth, twenty nineteen meeting, so I'm on page nine.
Perfect.
And it's the blue, it's the top blue one?
Oh, yes.
And it says that, uh, this can be reduced in technology, if you look at the top of group one oh nine in our budget, the technology, course fees are very out of whack based on nineteen actuals, so...
Yeah, we had, actually, I'm glad you brought that up, that we had actually talked about, um, cutting that, at least another ten thousand dollars. A lot of that's for training for, um, Power School, which is our student information system. Well, we have a, um, student information specialist this year, and then also for Munis training, but you're right, we did look at making it, taking a big chunk out of that.
I just wanted to make sure that there, we have an answer on that particular line.
Yeah.
And also, in this object code, um, if you look at fiscal year eighteen actuals, it's two, twenty-three, six, thirty-four. So, I think that, um, Donna, your point is well-taken, because even in the year before...
Right.
Um, it was, uh, down, so I think that even though we're in a hard freeze, there seems to be like, I know there was, there's Munis stuff in there too, but it seems like there was a...
Right.
Something motivating that.
We were also frozen in eighteen for P D, so there wasn't a lot going out, and any that people did, I tried to use our grants first, use grant money, because I, that has to get expended by the end of the calendar year, rather than using board of ed funds. So that's why I might see...
Okay, that's important information, too.
I think, uh, my point is, and I agree with what Donna and Nick are both saying, but my point is, if we have to, uh, renew the electrician's license for this year, got it. Get it done, right? But if there's other ones that are, that don't need to be a priority this year, that don't need to be done, that are more optional, voluntary, then let's, let's look at those as opportunities.
Right. Right, I, I, I say, I keep going back to the statement, essential versus non-essential.
Right, right.
I wanna minimize as much as I can that affects students, you know, to, you know, 'cause that's the important, to me, at least to me. I'm just speak for myself, like, that's to me the important...
What can we do then?
Right. Right. So if there's, this is an area for opportunity to, to, to do, make some reductions here, I think we need to take it. Especially that technology one that really stands out the most. Anybody else have anything? So Joe, you'll just look into these and see what is really essential here, and then can give us what we can make a reduction there for? All right, P D in service, external vendor. Anybody have any questions on that? It seems pretty much in line. Sheila, did you wanna say something?
Well, it's, you know, it's some different specific trainings, we've got, you know, AP trainings for teachers, we'll go through that line. PMT training, it's a requirement that the state has put in, so I have to have trainers, train our staff. They have to go yearly for training, that comes out of this line as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's pretty much in line, so I think everybody's good with this?
Don't have highlights all over that page?
No, I do not.
No, it's too long.
Now I do on the next page, on page one eleven. Other professional services.
Donna, that's also on our, that's on the next one on our sheet.
Right. All right, so...
That's mostly me.
All right, can I just like ask a question real quick? Like for, I know we've always had a medical advisor, so why, why is, like in two thousand nineteen, there was nothing expended? Because we've always had to obviously pay this person, did he just go to...
He doesn't, he doesn't, he doesn't charge us, um, but we're afraid to take it out.
Okay.
Someday he may charge us.
All right, fair enough, that, that was my question. So he doesn't charge what he meant, so, yeah, no, we need to...
It's been the same doctor, and he just, he has never billed us, but we're afraid to take it out, please.
Right, yeah, no. Better safe than sorry, especially for the small amount of money that it is. Occupational therapy? Darling, this is gonna be mostly you.
I, that's mostly my question. So, it's based on actuals for OT and PT, which we, um, we have a service consultation...
It's based on actuals for, um, OT and PT, which we, um, we have a service constellations that, um, we get our occupational therapists and our physical therapists. So, that was, um, for the summer, that was our actuals for the summer, um, what it cost us to service the students. And then, um, the next line is, again, it's contractual, we have three full-time occupational therapists and appointing, um, physical therapists, and there was a contract increase this year.
Okay. And how about, um, nur, the nurse one, the nurse service sped?
Yeah, that's student-specific.
Okay. Okay, so that, the whole thing is student-specific, okay?
And then, um, the, the nurses sub, that's an agency that we use, in case nurses are out, we have to pay.
Okay, have, do we use that? Because again, there was no actual.
Yeah, we haven't had to use it, um, lately, we've been kind of covering our nurses here and there, um, but we have, in the years past, we've had to use it when we had nurses out more, um, not so much lately.
Okay, so the question is, is can we take that down a little and still be okay?
Yeah, let me look into my history on that.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then the, um, independent evaluations, um, you know, you could, you could see that we, we had expended, um, fifty thousand dollars, and it's just a growing number of evaluations of, that we're doing with, um, some mental health.
Okay, how about the prof, uh, audio hearing?
So, this is, um, this is again, stu, um, specific, um, we had to get a new, um, person to do our audio evaluations, because the business had closed, so there is a little bit, we're using CES now.
Okay.
There was just a little bit of an increase, she really was, we really had a good rate with her, so, um, and we do about five to ten students in a year.
And, and Linda, we have, what are the actuals year-to-date for that account? Do you have, like, is it, is it showing up?
For audio?
Yeah. Thank you.
There's ninety accounts, so.
Donna, I saw that one too, cause it's going from forty to eighty, but we, here it says twenty nineteen actual, one hundred and twenty-three thousand.
That's legal, that's for legal.
That's legal.
Definitely, we're talking, and it's a small amount, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're tracking it, because you know, cause obviously.
Um, sorry.
We have a hundred and sixty-seven dollars actual, but we have eighteen ninety-three encumbered.
Okay.
So, we only have four hundred and forty dollars to bill.
Right, so those are just bills that haven't come in yet, that we know that are coming, all right. Yeah, then the next one I do have highlighted too, which is legal, and that's like, wow, all over the board. And that's just specific to whatever comes up.
Right, hearings, mediations, you know, um, Kay had mentioned when we did our budget workshop, that if, you know, parents bring attorneys, we bring our attorney, so.
Right.
Why, why are we budgeting, you know, forty grand?
We're budgeting eighty.
Eighty grand, no, I know, we're going up to eighty, right?
Well, we bud, we, our actuals in, um, twenty nineteen were a hundred and twenty-three thousand, Linda, can you just tell us where we were at year-to-date in that account, please?
This was one of those areas I had to ask Kay before she left, and she said this was going here, and she thought there would be fewer settlements, you know, um, next year. At least that's what we're trending at the time.
Uh, actuals are forty-one thousand, we have encumbered forty-eight, so we're over by fifty.
Wow.
So, yeah, so you're talking ninety, if we.
So we're about ninety grand right now?
We're at ninety so far.
That's within encumbered, with, what's encumbered.
With encumbrances.
But we budgeted forty for this year.
This is a hard line, line item to, to budget for, this is hard to, this is one of those ones that.
What's our, can we look at like a three-year trend on something like this?
Well, last year is one twenty-three.
And the year before was forty-five, three fifty-one.
Wow.
So it's a great variance.
Yeah.
That is a huge variance, so what was it in twenty eighteen?
Forty-five, three fifty-one.
Three fifty-one, okay.
You don't have seventeen, do you?
Like, wow, like it went from forty.
Ninety-five, one fifty-one.
Yeah, so it goes up and down depending on what's going on for the, in that particular year.
And the year before sixteen was forty-one, it's all over the place.
Yeah, it's all over the place.
Alright, so we're looking for a low year next year then?
Thousand, yeah.
Every other.
The trend holds.
That's what we thought for insurance.
Yeah. I think at this point, let's leave it, I mean, that may be a place to revisit, but it's just so.
Unpredictable.
Unpredictable, thank you, that's the great word.
With those variances.
Yeah. All right, other professional services is pretty much in line. It's just really a ten percent increase, and. Anybody have any other questions on ninety-nine? Cause the book count continues on the next page. Okay, one twelve. So Joe, you just think the meteorologists will still do like the thousand, that doesn't change?
Yes. Yeah.
The biggest one I had a question on was the, is technical service? G A S B forty-three, oh, Gatsby forty, forty-three and forty-five, you think I'm the accountant, I would know that? That's funny. Um, there was fourteen thousand expended in twenty nineteen, but nothing is being, um, budgeted for.
It was a one-time upgrade.
One-time upgrade, okay.
Do you know when that happens again? Does it happen?
I don't know, I don't know.
But you'll, we'll probably know in, for, when that year rolls around.
I don't follow them.
It's a, yeah.
Oh, that was a Microsoft, that's right?
There was one last year, two thousand nineteen, you don't know when the next one would be.
Forty thousand.
It was, it says it's Gatsby forty-three, Gatsby forty-five, that's, those are generally, um, general accounting principle, um, accepted, you know, for government.
I'm, I'm not aware of any planned updates. I'm not sure that's even in my line, I don't have that in my book.
It probably comes out of the accounting office because of the fact that it's, it's, it has to do with the accounting standards, it's the governmental accounting standards.
Do you have to update the software with the new standards?
Probably, doubt that we follow Gatsby forty-five at all, but, you know, but nobody follows Gatsby forty-five, or every, um, municipality would probably be bankrupt if we did, if they did.
This was, uh, Microsoft Office.
Oh, it was Microsoft Office?
Yes, it was.
So it's just, is it just being, it's just coded wrong then, in the wrong account? No, yeah, not to you, Paul, cause to Linda, are they just?
Account numbers are in there, I mean, it's probably just, it's probably technical services, the Gatsby part is probably just still in there, I couldn't take out the line, the part of it that says Gatsby, it's just something must've got coded there years back, that's when the account was created, so.
Oh, okay.
I can get rid of that.
So that's Microsoft, Paul?
Yeah, Microsoft Office.
And so is there another upgrade?
No.
Looking on the horizon?
For, not for the foreseeable future.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And then I think we've covered the massive increase to reading one eighty at our first one, so I don't know if we need to cover that again, cause we kind of talked in length and in very much detail about that, um, change. Nobody, does, nobody really wants to be, go through that again, right? So we can.
No, there was, yeah, no.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on that page?
What's the, what's the one for, that's, uh, two thousand nineteen actual, one sixteen, budgeting one sixty-seven?
Oh, that's, that's, that's the read one eighty program that, um, that Mike talked about, that's the one where read one eighty, which we would just be paying like a monthly, like license, decided that read one eighty, that particular software is gone, and if you'd like to continue, you have to buy a whole, the whole new program, as opposed to just a license.
We had about a ten-year subscription, it's like thirty grand, or you could buy a year subscription for twenty-two grand.
Yeah.
And then buy the next year twenty-two grand, and then the next year twenty-two grand.
Right. So Paul actually was looking at a, at a cut in that line, but then when read one eighty, when we told, were told that, um, that's either you just buy the whole brand-new system, or you're out of luck because the license is about, unavailable, we had to buy the whole new system.
And we're buying it over ten years?
No, it's a one-year, right?
Five years?
Five, okay. So, the renewal, we paid two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars this year. They have now gone to an online version of that program. The renewal for that is twenty-seven thousand dollars per year. Or we could do a five-year renewal upfront for thirty-five thousand dollars, and it would cover us for five years.
Thirty-five K a year, for five years?
No, thirty-five total for the five years.
Total for five years.
So you can either do, what was it, the twenty-two, a year, or thirty-five for five years?
That was part of his presentation, when he talked to us, and we were going back and forth on, do we wanna spend thirty-five for five, and then what if they go out of business and all that?
Yes. Right, we had a very lengthy discussion on this.
Yeah, they're not going out of business.
Right.
So we're better off doing the five?
Yes.
So which line is that? Sorry, Donna.
This is, this one right here.
So if it's thirty-five, why are we, why is the budget line at one sixty-seven?
Well.
Oh, is that the, the difference between the?
That, right, there's other things in there, that's just one of the items that is in there. So, so Paul had did a full presentation, the first meeting, right, on December sixth, of the whole entire outline of everything in, that went into that line item.
Is that all software maintenance, Paul? Like different software maintenance?
Uh, no, not all of it.
Okay.
Um, there's, it's split between, uh, that line and technical services, there's a little bit of software in that.
Okay.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else on that?
No.
All right, we will move on to the next page, um, the only one I really had highlighted here was just the, um, the, the negotiation reserve, because we haven't expended anything, this is really the question, we haven't expended anything, but then we have a, a, a budget. You see it?
The fifteen thousand?
Yeah, the fifteen thousand. So it looks like we haven't expended anything, we haven't budgeted anything, but now we're putting in something, so that was nearly my question. I mean, I understand having a negotiation reserve, but like, why wouldn't we have had that in the past? I'm sorry?
Uh, it was budgeted, uh, budget reserves, we was budgeting on page eighty-seven, seventy-five, one, five, the, um.
It was in a different line.
Oh, they changed it?
Yeah.
So it's back to eighty-seven, you said?
Yep.
Okay. Just to make sure that that's going down.
That's not it.
Okay.
It should be one, five, six.
No, that's the.
That's zero, so.
That's zero, and then that's a one oh five budget. How did we miss that? Did we not talk about that? Wasn't this the one that was very complicated, where it was going?
He had budgeted differently this year, the way he did like lane changes, and the lane changes are part of the one on page eighty-seven.
Right.
Right, they picked the top eight most expensive lane changes based on what they were anticipating, and budgeted those top eight.
And budgeted those.
All right, we had this very big discussion that, well, that, right?
Rather than putting it in salary, I think in the past, it had been, it had been put in salary, the idea was, uh, the lane changes.
Right.
So, putting the lane changes here, and then, so if you see in the past, it was seventy-five thousand, that was probably for negotiation reserves. This year it's a hundred and five, that, it's for the lane changes, and the negotiation reserve is on page one thirteen.
All right, right, and this is the one I think I remember that I was completely against budgeting lane changes different than the person's salary, because it's really part of the salary.
No, but what we, what we said was that when the lane change occurs, the money.
Oh, that's right, but in the actual is gonna be right, but we're just, this is just a placeholder, right?
This way we can at least track.
Right, right, thank you for reminding me, that's right, I said, yes, yes, thank you. So in actuality, it's gonna be done and aligned, right, Linda?
Yes.
This is just a placeholder.
It always has been done on the line, for the, the person would get paid on their line.
Perfect. Perfect, gotcha.
So then the fifteen thousand on page one thirteen, if we're in a non-negotiation year, what is the?
Well, no, you would, we still have other contracts, they're all rotating.
Oh, pares and nurses, no, right, right.
Right, right, it, it's all just on a.
We have secretaries and custodians there this year, and then.
And admin and pares are next year.
Got it.
What's the one above it? Three thousand, same scenario?
Oh, that's prom, we can get rid of that. We've been doing post-prom, giving them a donation, if need be, we can get rid of that, we just don't have the money to get that.
Well, this says the super, the note here, super redefund entertainment at prom.
Mm-hmm. Again, that, that is what's been happening for the past few years.
Do you wanna tell the P T C?
I'll tell. But this is for next year, not this year.
Yeah.
Um, you know, they, every year, the, um, the board gives a three thousand dollar donation to pay for entertainment at post-prom. That is, you know.
It was coming out of special revenues.
Right, but again, that's not a, oh, that has to happen type of thing.
I'd zero that out, I think.
It's not hidden in the classroom.
And then, but we're not, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't have anything in our plan this year.
It's coming out, it was coming out of special revenue.
Somewhere else, okay.
Yeah. All right. All right, we are moving on to the four thousands. All right, the first up is, is water, which is just.
Okay.
I think these are all based on.
Think we need that?
Yeah, I'm thinking we need that, I'm thinking that, these are probably, you know, pretty accurate to what we are usage and just budgeting what our usage is, because it's pretty, if you look at it, it's pretty, you know, pretty close to what we've actually spent.
And just to make sure, even though this page, page one fourteen has a chalk hill line item in it, this one is.
This is for the irrigation for the backfield, this we actually pay for. So even though the school is closed for, um, the board still actually pays the water to irrigate that backfield, because both, um, Jackie Hallow uses it for PE, and then it's also used to.
Yeah, they use, they use it here.
I just wanna make sure that, another meeting, we said all chalk hill lines are inactive, but this is an asterisk.
This is correct. Yeah.
This is correct.
Yes, this is an asterisk, yes, this one we do actually use.
Right, but it's still in the budget, it's labeled as.
Yep, no, it's supposed to be, yeah. Anybody have any questions on this?
Just a quick question on that, if you go down to the last line, the school, the system line, it says it's twenty thousand, but then you go to the actual, total water being forty-eight thousand? Right?
Well, no, that's total, total, for the whole thing, so forty-eight thousand is total actual.
To those two sheets.
For the two sheets, and then the superintendent budget is fifty-one.
Water system wide, is it zero?
Gotcha.
Yeah. All right. Next one is, um, disposal services, which I'm just gonna say is our actual bills for our, our trash.
Yep.
Correct?
Correct.
All right. Anybody have any questions on that?
No.
All right, grounds maintenance. This looks like it's trimming and removal of trees, repairs to asphalt lots, mulching, striping of playing fields, cutting of lawn systems.
Not including.
Just done else.
This is pretty much dead on to what, but, but actual is, so.
This is, uh, I'm, yeah, I'm pretty sure this is, Jeff, to your question, correct if I'm wrong, but I think this is all the out of, um, the out-of-house stuff that's done. Uh, Masick does all their own, uh, 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 fields, um, but, yeah, this is for the other, the other, uh.
They cut their own fields, yeah.
Yeah, Masick cuts their own fields, this is for, uh, the contracts for the other, uh, companies that we use to, you know, build this.
For all the other buildings.
Yes, yeah, the only thing we can cross off is striping of playing fields, cause our guys here go around and straighten all the fields.
Perfect. All right. Contracted services. So the septic service, um, just the.
Was hired last year, cause there was an issue at Masick, we had, we had an issue, um, down from the softball field down to the baseball field.
Okay. Oh, yes.
And then it went, and then it went into the baseball field.
Yes, yes, I remember that issue. Mm-hmm, all right. Um. Contracted heating. Contracted heating. This is just repairs, is this what that is, repairs?
We had in the past oil and gas capabilities at Monroe and Masick.
I don't think that, I don't think this is what that's for, I think these are contracted services. I think, I think oil and gas and all those are their own line items, if I'm not correct.
This looks like preventative maintenance.
Are these lines that would be hit in the hundred thousand dollar freeze that we have on for the current fiscal year?
When we, when we were using gas, I don't know if this, I can't recall what year this was, when Gabby was saying we were, we were using gas, it was, it was less expensive and it runs cleaner, and then you don't have to service it as often as you do in oil. So the schools that had, I don't, I think that's.
Those are in different lines.
Yeah, you gotta get the furnaces serviced every year.
I think, I think the current freeze included a lot of, um, of the emergency repairs more than this, uh, this stuff here.
So this is like routine?
This is routine, yeah.
Okay. And so that's what most of these are then, I take?
Yeah.
The, on page one nineteen, the forty three, one seventy three, is that also contributing to Mas, the Masick field problem?
The plumbing?
Oh, we had a pipe burst.
Yeah.
Is it that? It was also at Masick, but it was a pool, and then we had some further, is that that?
And there was a supply line.
Was that right when Jake was starting?
Supply line at Masick, uh, going into the pool area.
Yeah.
Good memory, Shannon.
You know, when there's an explosion or something. But just don't ask me what I ate for dinner last night, I won't remember.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. The clock, that's an adding, that's something new, is that something for, John, is that something for you? The thousand dollar clock made for contracted services?
Is that for the pool for the swim team? Cause that was, that was, I thought, donated.
Clocks are classroom clocks.
Those are classroom clocks?
They're battery operated.
So we have them on a contract service now?
Yeah, we purchase them outright.
Okay. So, cause we haven't expended anything, that's why I'm asking? Is there anything expended this year?
I have a note that there's nothing spent last year, cause of the freeze last year, so my, my gut tells me it's probably the same this year.
But do we have like, do all of our classroom clocks work?
No.
No, I mean, normally. Normally they'll come in, service them and sync them all at least once a year, we didn't do it last year because of the freeze. Probably not gonna do it this year because of the freeze, we still would like to sync them with the bells, but if it isn't to be, it isn't to be.
All right, well, let's try to leave this in here right now.
That is what it's for.
Actuals at eighteen were three thousand dollars.
Okay, let's try and we'll see.
Yeah, I think telling the time is important.
Do we want the kids to know what time it is, or like have them guessing?
I don't know, I sit here and I don't.
They know. They know.
Does it affect the bells ringing?
Or their watches.
I think the next one down.
Yeah.
More important in the elementary schools than your teacher, but it's tell the time.
Contracted services going from seventy five hundred to eleven thousand?
Yeah.
And the actual was seven, seventy eight?
Do we know why? One twenty two, Shirley, you said?
Yeah, there's a decrease in contracted services.
Right, that eighty five hundred?
Eighty five hundred, yeah.
Okay.
So it's actually, it's still an overall decrease?
Yeah.
From sixteen to eleven.
Okay. Everything else seems pretty reasonable to me. Should we go on to the next? The fire, I, I take it this is the fire extinguishers? Are we redoing them on page, the top of page one twenty one, is that why that has, that's increasing? It's the inspection, are we buying new ones, cause they're outdated?
Right, that's what happens, they, they have a limited, uh, life expectancy. You know, they, yearly, they check them all, and when they're out of code, then we replace them.
Okay, perfect, so those are just to replace. Thank you. All right, the next one is the generator. Um, this, there was nothing expended in twenty nineteen, I don't know if there was something expended in, um, currently to year to date.
Oh, you probably didn't have them ser, you, you get them.
Probably, probably didn't have it serviced because of the freeze last year. But that services, I'm assuming it's a Masick generator?
Well, we have two, one at Jackie Haller and one at Masick.
This one is, is, this one is actually, um, for what it's worth, is saying?
Masick.
Masick.
There were, I, there was two line items for a generator.
Yeah, it looks like, um, it looks like the two hit.
Generator, Jackie Haller.
System wide, uh, line down below.
Yeah, it's a system wide.
You see that? System wide got hit for in two thirty.
Right, and then, but it's still being budgeted at eleven, so are they just separating it then?
Because they separated them out.
Okay.
Yeah, forty five hundred for Masick, eleven ten for system wide.
So they're just separating them out correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I wonder if that should be under system wide and not under Jackie Haller? Right now it's under system wide, but the only two generators we have are at Masick and Jackie Haller.
Correct.
Yeah.
So were they serviced, or are they planning to?
They were serviced, it looks like, it looks like two thousand nineteen.
All under one line.
All under one line.
Under that system wide line, there's thirteen, eight thirty.
So they were in twenty nineteen?
Mm-hmm.
That's good.
We also have a generator at, uh, the RT building, that runs off of propane.
Okay.
Service that.
Okay.
Okay, so it is system wide.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, locks look pretty reasonable. Glass. Replace broken glass. That's just going up, do we, how, have we expended anything, Linda, in that account so far? We spent like sixteen hundred in twenty nineteen, we're budgeting forty five hundred.
Nothing yet this year.
Nothing yet, nothing in Comberd? What?
Looks like we keep budgeting the same amount.
Yeah, I wonder if we should take that down a bit?
The history on it, yeah.
Do you know what it is in two thousand?
Two thousand seventeen, we spent six thousand one eighty six.
Wow.
A lot of broken glass.
But then eighteen, we spent one ninety one, and then nineteen sixteen twenty nine.
That's why we couldn't sync the clock.
All over the place.
Right, I'm wondering if we can just take it down to two thousand, take twenty five hundred out, we still leave something there.
Do we know why? Was there a storm or something breaking? Do you know why it would happen in twenty seventeen? Does anybody, no, that's okay, I was just curious if, what, if.
Yeah, because if that happened, insurance. I'd say split the diff.
I would say just take twenty five hundred out, leave two thousand, it's still higher than what we've been spending and be done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Cut to two thousand.
Cut to two thousand. Every little, every dollar helps. Anything else on those? We already talked about the eighty five hundred on the next page. All right. All right, the next one is building, um, repairs and maintenance. Linda, do you know how much we've expended so far this year? This is, I think, the one that's just a freeze, right?
Yes.
Joe?
This, I, I would think this is gonna freeze this.
Okay. If we can get a little history on this one. We may not have expended anything here because of the freeze, but just wanna check.
Oh, that's why, it's grouped, that's why I have to put the whole number. The numbers that are over there, those eight digit codes are groups, so when I look it up, a whole slew of numbers comes up, and it's not. Not the same amount as that.
No problems, take your time.
Okay, actuals, sixty one thousand five eighty five, we have twenty two thousand four eighty one in Comberd. So you're talking like eighty, eighty three, eighty four?
Okay.
So far.
So far, okay, and what do we, can you just tell quickly what we did in eighteen?
In, in nineteen, we did one oh two, one one three, eighteen, we did one thirty four, three seventy nine.
Okay.
But see, my, my point about that line is.
It, you, you don't know what's gonna happen.
Right, but I'm concerned in this line, if this is where the hard freeze is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Right, I mean, if that is the hard freeze, I mean, we are.
How is it a hard freeze if we're at eighty three thousand so far this year?
That's the concern.
Right, that's my point, that it's really only, if, if we stop today and we say, do not spend any more money from this line, we're only saving forty something instead of a hundred.
Can, can we just confirm that that's where the hard freeze, that hundred thousand dollar hard freeze is? Because if that, because if that is the case, then the hard freeze is out the door because.
There's, well, there's more on the next.
The next page, I was gonna say, could be that.
Right, it could be, it could be a lot of different.
I thought it was under emergency, but I don't know.
Okay, so let's go to the next one, but if, we can just like, we can just confirm that?
Emergency building repairs.
Yeah.
What's the difference? Okay, I guess.
I guess it's separated between emergency and non-emergency. Linda, do you know what we've spent in that whole emergency one?
The one, the eighty five thousand one, is that what it was gonna be?
Yeah, the eighty five thousand one.
Do we need two separate lines for this other thing?
I don't know, I, I, that's a great question.
Uh, eight thousand seven forty currently.
Not very many emergencies this year.
No.
Lot of repairs, but not many emergency ones.
Or that's the.
So that must be where they have the hundred thousand freeze in.
Right, because, yeah, cause our budget's at one sixteen.
Right. Do we just wanna leave this alone at the ninety five at this point? I mean, who knows what's gonna happen, that's the problem.
Especially with the hard freeze being on this year.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So why don't we?
It does look like we're gonna spend down the other one, though.
Right.
And if we're at, if we have one twenty two in plan, and we're already at eighty three, we're gonna, we're gonna zero that one out.
Right, I was just trying to calculate that.
I would, yeah, leave it, leave it in, but I, I would say, look at, you know, why do you have two separate accounts? How are you classifying one versus the other?
Does anybody know why they use the two separate accounts? Are they just trying to separate what's regular routine, repairs and maintenance, and what is, for some reason, why is it like the emergency?
An example is, just recently, we had two, uh, failed expansion joints at Masick.
Mm-hmm.
And that had to be done over a three day period. We have to drain the glycol down from the system, make the repairs, put it back together, and re-energize the system. There aren't a lot of, in each building, there's not a lot of shut off valves, so you can take down a whole building, especially Jackie Haller, make the whole building down to make repairs. Uh, and in this budget, um, there's a building repair, uh, repair account, there's an emergency building repair account. So this, uh, repair that we just did over the weekend, will hit that emergency.
I'm just.
If we let it go, the building will flood.
Oh, no, 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 we're just wondering why, is there a reason why we wanna, why we're separating it to show it's an emergency versus it's just a repair, you know, as, as a regular?
It's my knowledge, no, it's something that's always been.
Gotcha.
I mean, if we, we know going forward that it's just, this is the repair account, right? Then we're not gonna say, cut the repair and leave the emergency repair, right? Or if, if, I think it makes sense to combine them. If, if we, there's a, there's a bunch of stuff in here for maintenance too, right? I don't necessarily think we need a maintenance line for every single thing, right? Do I need a maintenance line for, for septic and for water and for electric? Or can just put in more of a generic maintenance line and more of a generic repairs line, right? I'm just thinking for simplicity's sake.
It's just a little easier to track it when it's broken out, either, whether it is.
I think it's something we can talk about, I don't think it's gonna be make or break us at this point, but a good point, like, does it really matter? You know, I don't know.
If it helps, does it help to keep track of, um, what, what we, if we maintenance this, this year, and then we're gonna, especially like in budget, budget freeze situations, or
I'm just thinking.
Like, if you're just gonna keep track of what you're doing, what year, when you're.
Some of this is fluid, though, right? I mean, it's difficult to project what some of this is gonna be, you gotta look at trends and whatnot, so, you know, maybe if you just put it into more of a pool, you're gonna be able to offset, we gotta do this this year, but we didn't have to do this this year, right? So, uh, that's.
Well, we can see that in the totals of the object codes too at the bottom.
Right.
Like year over year, we can see how the totals are tracking, but.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's a good discussion going forward, if we wanna make an account adjustment.
There's just so many lines in here that you gotta, you gotta try to budget and project and everything, so.
Right, right, I think, I think that's a good conversation, can we condense some of this stuff? And not make it so encompassful of a, of a budget? Does it matter? At this point, if the budget's been done this way, so I mean, but we can change things going forward if we want.
So are we saying both of these accounts that?
I would imagine.
The total building repair and the emergency repairs, we're, we're leaving them?
I think at this point, yes. Because again, this one is the one that has the, and just because it has a freeze in it, doesn't necessarily mean that that's gonna be plausible if something happens. But technically, this is the one that has the freeze.
Which one is that?
Uh, the emergency repairs.
Yeah, but did you say that we just made an expenditure on it?
Eighty seven hundred, is that the expenditure you made, or is there more coming?
No, there's more coming.
On the emergency repairs?
Yeah, they said they just did this weekend.
Yeah, the weekend.
Do we know about how much, or you don't know?
I don't have that total yet.
I think the first thing we have to do is find out where, we keep asking where that, the maintenance freeze is.
Okay.
So, Joe?
It's multiple accounts, it's not one account that makes up the hundred thousand dollars.
Got it.
Okay. So is it all in this repair and maintenance area, or no?
Yeah.
It's too much to track there, though. It's crazy. You know, if this is truly frozen and we're making expenditures, we're not realizing the savings that we, we thought we could be.
Right, so what accounts are, is it coming from? So is it between the two of them, regular repairs and maintenance and?
So what I did was, I minus building repairs fifteen thousand.
Okay.
Emergency building repairs fifteen thousand. Equipment repairs, vehicles, forty five seventy six. Uh, equipment, non-instruction of plant, six thousand dollars. Contracted heating, um, seventeen thousand, I'm sorry, those numbers are wrong. Five thousand in vehicle repairs. Eight thousand in non-instruction of plant, minus seventeen in heating, minus twenty in roof repair, minus ten in grounds.
Okay.
Uh, minus ten in the locksmith, minus twenty five in the glass repair.
In the what repair, I'm sorry?
The glass.
Oh, glass.
And that comes to one oh two, five hundred.
Okay, so it's in multiple accounts?
So it's in multiple accounts, yeah.
And? So do you still feel confident that those are, are good freeze numbers, or are you starting to see? Or are you starting to see that we're expending money in there and that we may, that hundred thousand dollars may not cut it? Or may, we may not be able to save that?
Well, we've been trying to be conservative as far as repairs go, and, uh, the emergency account obviously is gonna get hit pretty heavy. Because of the weekend, uh, work that we did, but I'm confident that this will fly.
Okay, okay, so I think we should not touch it. All right, let's move on to equipment. I'm taking it the music stuff is just repairs to musical instruments and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the repairs, general plant, is that just the, just up a little? And then we have preventive maintenance that's going up about six grand. And it looks like that's just because of this really salt and sanding.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's some good notes on both of those ones.
Yeah, very good notes.
Is the board still part of the town's rolling stock?
Of, of Salton Stand?
No, for vehicles.
You mean with regard to repairs of them?
Regards replacement?
Yes.
Okay, so we're, it, when we replace.
I don't think, where is this, the capital plan? The capital plan would talk to, um, it, it, they put it, it's put in the capital plan?
Okay. Cause I remember, I think when I was on council, we created a rolling stock account on the town side that had a plan for.
I'm in the wrong book, sorry.
A vehicles, but that the board, vehicles, I, I, it might've changed over five or six years, but I'm not sure.
So in the, um, hold on, in the capital plan, there should, there is, um, I can't find the capital plan.
So, last page of this.
Okay.
It's like the last regular page.
Capital plan that we used to do is we would do a capital plan, and then, and then we would do an equipment one.
I don't see any vehicles on the.
I don't see any vehicles on there either, cause we used to do two plans, we would do a, a true capital plan, and then we would do an equipment plan for replacing the F-one-fifty, the, you know, walk-behind, um, machine. So, did they do that, do you know?
I don't know, I don't think so.
Yeah, I could be wrong, too, I could've sworn that what the town put in their, on their capital side for vehi- specifically for vehicles, and that there was a replacement plan, and the board was in on that, but I, I could be wrong.
You know what, though, Jim, um, there was one year he wanted to buy a truck, and it got cut out of his budget, and then it was another year, he, so the following year, he wanted to buy that truck, and I believe it again got cut from his budget, so. I, I'm, I'm not sure.
In the past several years.
That's totally possible, but I know that, I know that Jim was wanting to buy.
In the past several years, those purchases have been done on the town side.
Yeah, so it might, might be on the town.
But there should be still an equipment plan in here on what needs to be replaced and what, when. I'll see, I think I still have my old book at home, so I'll see in my old, last year's book, unless you guys have the last year's budget book.
I think I lost it.
I think there was, there, I know there was, a equipment one in there, so I don't know if it's accurate, but.
Separate from.
Yeah, separate, cause we've always done, I probably threw out old books because, well, I didn't throw them out, but I know the husband probably threw out the oldest, ten years' worth of budget books.
I'm just looking at the years on some of these cars.
Right, and on, and I'm, I know we used to do it separate, I know we had one for capital, two capital, and one for equipment.
Yeah, because I, I remember a truck being listed, and I don't know if it was two years ago, or.
Right.
It was a, it was a Jim thing.
No, but it, it was always in there, and the past few years, the town has picked up the cost of those vehicle replacements.
Okay.
Like the walk-behind, you know, machine and.
Yeah. Yep.
You know, truck replacement. So I'll see if I have it at home, if those didn't go bye-bye, all the rest of this stuff. Alrighty. Yeah, see, like the walk-behind floor scrubber, and the way it was, and, and what ended, so the equipment stuff would go into the operating budget, and then the town would be like, no, we'll just, we're gonna pay for it as, as, as part of the town, so it would come out of our operating budget.
Right, and then I thought the town bundled it.
They, they did, they did.
Yeah, okay, so maybe.
But I don't know if any of this, can you tell us if any of these are for replacement stuff in this account, is equipment, repairs and maintenance, or no?
This wouldn't be replacement.
Exactly what it is, is repairs.
This wouldn't be replacement, yeah.
Would not be the equipment, do you have equipment replacement pu- put in the budget?
I don't, no.
No, nothing for next year?
No.
But replacing anything? Is there anything that needs to be replaced?
We have machines that are ten years' old or older, floor scrubbers, uh, uh, machines that we clean the lavatories with.
Okay, is any of them at their end of their useful life that we're looking at that?
We keep repairing them, you know, they need batteries, uh, they need motors, so we just repair them. The shell is good, but everything else, for a ten-year-old, uh, machine that gets used daily, you know, pays its toll.
Could you do us a favor and put a list together of those things that you really think are at the end of the useful life, that really cannot be repaired anymore?
If it, yeah, if it was your own, you wouldn't put another dime into it, type of a thing?
Right, right, exactly.
To repairing it.
Because it's not worth to continue, replace it, and just put a list together of what those are for us?
Okay.
Thank you.
Donna, the, the town is carrying in this year's budget, a whole list of things in their five-year capital plan for the Board of Education.
Okay.
Um, PA and clock system replacement, Ford F-three-fifty pickup, chrome books, emergency generators, front driveway reconstruction, font hollow, roof replacement, Monroe L., central office, ducts and replace HVAC, flooring and all-purpose room, cafe, Monroe L.
That's in the current year budget?
It's in the five-year plan.
The capital, five-year.
It's in the town's five-year capital plan.
Right.
And it's in this year's budget, so some of those items are, they're in various years, but.
So there was. Right. Right.
The bottom line is, the town is carrying those capital items.
In their plan.
In their plan.
Which means that at one time, we had to have had an equipment plan, because they would not have been able to get that information without it, it's just that we don't have it here in our book.
I remember, it used to be on our five-year budget, I remember we had.
Right. Right, we've had two, two pages, two different pages, one was pure capital, and one was equipment.
Yeah.
So, uh, so the things that Steve just read off are those, um, other stuff, do you think, or is that covers it? The F, the three-fifty?
Maybe other items, I, I really would like a copy of that.
Okay.
Come here, we need to get that.
Yeah.
It, it, it's in the budget on the town's website, that we approved nineteen-twenty budget.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't wanna be budgeting for that as well, it has a. Right.
Well, no, 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 we just need to make sure we have an updated.
Clock replacement. Clock replacement was one of them, and we just went through, spent time on Nick's clock replacement.
Yeah, clock system replacement and font hollow.
Right.
Now it is.
Okay, so we need to just, so some of the things that.
We need to verify that.
Some of the things that, you know, Steve just read off to us are things that are on our true, uh, on our true capital, like the Monroe L. roof repair. Um, like the, you know, um, what else did he just say? The font hollow front driveway reconfiguration, like that's already on there. He has, there's some equipment stuff, so we have to figure out if that's an all-encompassing list, or if we need to add some stuff on the equipment, so that it gets ultimately on the town's, um, the town's capital and equipment replacement list. Cause that needs to go to the town when we submit our budget, so they can add it to that list.
I think we wanna understand.
So for twenty-twenty-one, they were looking at a Masick High School emergency generator in the front driveway of Font Hollow.
Masick High School emergency generator? Okay.
We just talked about maintaining our generators, so.
Right.
Yeah, so we gotta distinguish between.
And again, I, I, no, I mean, this doesn't tell me what that is, what that means.
Right.
Capex and OpEx, right?
Yes.
So he's talking, Steve's talking about the capital plan, right?
And equipment.
So, yeah, and we wanna make sure that we're not budgeting in the op plan for.
Well, no, equipment technically should go in the operating budget, but it hasn't in the past several years. It's been as, as Nick has said, it's been kind of packaged with the town's stuff.
I know, when I was on the council, cause I voted against it, the town created a rolling stock account, which was just for, it was bundled vehicles.
Right.
And there was a plan for the vehicles, and it was the same for, some of it's for IT, because IT shared between the town and VLE, so that replacement schedule was also bundled.
Right. Right.
And that was my only comment.
Yep, all right, great, so we'll figure, we'll figure that out. All right. Um, we will move on then, I guess, to the equipment one. I think we talked about music, um, we, we, I think we were down further, because we were just talking about vehicles and all that good stuff.
Yeah, do we believe that almost halfway up, that seventeen thousand two thirty-four is appropriate? For all of that that we were just talking about?
Well, this is just the repairs of it, not, is that, is that enough, is that gonna cover your thing?
Yeah.
The one for equipment, repairs, vehicles?
Equipment, vehicles, system-wide. It's up five or six thousand from actual?
For system-wide vehicles? So vehicle repairs, we spent eight, uh, ten thousand eight hundred forty-two dollars so far.
Okay.
This year, and we have more repairs coming in. When it happens, uh, with our vehicles is, they get heavy used, they get slammed during, uh, winter months, uh, so, which means repairs of the vehicle and the piles that are attached to the vehicles pays its toll.
Okay, so do you think the seventeen is a, a, a solid number, I guess, so to speak, for the budget?
It's hard to tell, you know, everything, so whether it breaks down or not, that's, it's a guessing game.
Okay. I think we're gonna have to roll the dice.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have a vehicle that's two thousand and five, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, to me, seems like it should've been part of the, the capital plan.
And that's why I put, I just wrote that note for myself, because we're gonna need to figure out, um, what, what's out there?
Yeah, what is.
Like, what is, what is, do you know what the two thousand and five vehicle is, offhand? Don't mean to put you on the spot.
Two thousand and five, I think that's, um, one of our three-fifty.
And that is what?
At the top of the list.
On the top of the list, is the three-fifty, so. I think that's already covered in there.
Yikes.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but I think the, the point is, if, if we're gonna replace it out of capital dollars, then we don't need to budget for maintenance of it anymore, which I assume is gonna be a.
But I, I think that's.
Sizable chunk, I guess.
I think that's one of those adjustments that the Board of Finance.
Yeah.
Could make, cause we don't know when the first election is, capital, until he presents his budget.
Right. Right, they need to, uh, uh, they need to firm that up, I think we leave it, and if that's an after-the-fact adjustment, that's an after-the-fact adjustment, once the Board of Finance does their thing.
We need interactive with these, so we're not.
Because you don't know, because they may say, as it's on top of the list, they may say, listen, we're pushing that out another year, you don't know, so.
When they vote on the budget, they vote on the capital plan and the op plan for the town?
They vote on the capital plan and the ops plan, but that's still pending the whole approval process, so you're still, it's still pending it being brought up, the town council, the Board of Finance approving it, bonding for it, so it's not like.
For the capital items, not for the operating expenses.
No, for the equipment stuff, too.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So it's not like, it's, so, as they.
Anything we're depreciating, or anything that's a capital project, goes to town meeting or referendum, half of the fact.
Over, over one-fifty, and usually they try to bundle that as much as possible.
Okay, I got you, okay.
But I'm just saying that if the, well, the town council votes on the cap plan, but they can't touch the Board of Ed budget, so. If the town council votes to put a car in, a truck in, then the Board of Finance has to make the adjustment to our budget, I mean, it's still gonna be adjusted before it goes out to referendums, I'm saying.
Right, but this is just the repairs, so if they go, okay, we're gonna replace it, then, you know, if we do an analysis and we're finding out that the bulk of this repairs is for that two thousand and five, and we're getting a new vehicle, you know, but you don't know that.
Pull it up.
Right, right, but at this point, I think you just leave it, because we don't know if it's even gonna pass, as.
Right.
You know, that's gonna be something they wanna do this year. All right, we'll move on to one twenty-six. Anybody have any questions on this page? Everything seems pretty in line to what we've been spending.
Yeah.
All right. The next one, I have AV.
Note I have here is, um, the discrepancies because of the freeze so far, I mean, I think that's gonna be the case for a lot of, like, the repairs and supplies.
All right, so what did we spend in the twenty-eighteen, then? Does it, looks like we spent twenty-six.
Six of last year.
Last year.
Pay, you always.
Twenty-eighteen, thirty-four, eight oh one, eighty-one.
And, and what have we expended so far?
So far, sixteen thousand three seventy-seven and six thousand two forty for encumbrances.
Okay, you said six thousand in encumbrance?
Yeah.
Roughly?
Yep.
And, and just, what is, we spent in twenty-seventeen?
Twenty-seventeen, eighteen thousand seven sixty.
So is there a reason why we're going up so much with plan this year?
Yeah, cause we seem to be like running around the same.
If you figure thirty, thirty-five K a year.
Right. Because right now, we've spent twenty-two.
Twenty-two so far.
Yeah.
Uh, which account are you looking at?
Page one twenty-seven.
We're looking at, um, equipment repairs AV.
System-wide.
System-wide.
Yeah, that's gonna be our projectors.
Okay.
And all the classrooms and smart board-related equipment, that's, so, and unfortunately, as they're getting older and older, we're getting more failures.
Two.
That's why, that's why, I mean, the number's been fairly flat year over year for the, the budget number, uh, but we are seeing a high rate of failures now.
Okay. Thank you, and please just jump in if I haven't said it before, if you have the answers, just jump in and let us know.
Well, they're out of warranty?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, yes, they're, yeah, they're.
I, I know those, I know they're very expensive, so, yeah.
Ten, twelve years old. Yeah, ten, twelve years old.
Wow, okay.
Yeah. And every penny's worth.
Now, are you looking at different technology going forward, or are you?
We are, we are, we're, we're appropriate, um, and we've piloted now in a couple of classrooms, uh, large format displays that are non-touch, where they just need to be able to share screens. Uh, we've got a couple of classrooms here at Masick, where we're using a new technology called AirTame, which is a wireless, you know, and students in the room can now connect to that display in the classroom.
Share content?
Right.
Perfect, okay.
Have you had discussions with the town about, um, doing bonding for that, or through your IT?
No, not, not at this point.
Okay, and when would be, we want, is this, okay, so let me go back, so we haven't had any discussions with the town, so is this something that we need to put on our capital plan to put to the town, so that we can move to this? What, when would the desired date be to try to do this?
Well, as far as the, using large format displays, right now, again, we're, we're piloting it.
Okay.
Um, part of the issue is, is that we can't buy consumer-grade TVs. So if I say, well, the large-screen TVs, they're cheap, I can go onto Target and buy one for a couple hundred dollars, unfortunately, if we do that, if we go that route, we'll be replacing them. Unfortunately, if we do that, if we go that route, we'll be replacing them every year. We have to get the commercial grade. Uh, they call it sixteen by seven, sixteen hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, they are considerably more expensive. So the prices are coming down, but before we jump on that, we wanna make sure that this is something that the district wants to move, move forward with.
This is something, when you say it's being piloted, Paul, I, I think we're piloting it in math and some other, some of the classes to see if it's a, it's a good solution for teachers.
I don't wanna capitalize IT.
And, and it will not, it will not be a, a one solution fits all for every grade or subject matter. We're still gonna need the interactive piece in some classrooms and grade levels, such as elementary.
And how is it working in math, Kevin Welsh?
Pretty good. The projection, yeah, John Bottalha has his class, he uses it to project up notes and writing down the tab himself. He's still working on a, like, a, a whiteboard app, so that he could then pass out and have different kids do work after seats, that they could show up on the board.
Okay.
Cause he's looking at it kinda split, so one kid can work here, one kid can work there, and then both works projected up there, and just see how two kids are approaching a problem. So he's really more using it now as a teacher, not really adding the classroom to get the kids.
Right. So does it make sense then, Paul, to at least put, even if we don't know what it is, at least put something in a capital budget to say, hey, we may need, you know, classroom, whatever you wanna call it, what will we wanna call it? Classroom?
Projection, yeah.
Right.
Technology upgrade.
Do you look at tech, technology across the board and bundle stuff together that you think is capital, de- depreciable, right? So what are you gonna spread out over five years, and then maybe we can go to the town with the one number?
Well, no, no, that's, that's what we, the town does do technology-
Yeah.
On their side, so what I'm saying is, that's why we do, is, is it worth putting in a district, you know, technology? Like, we have district technology for PC labs, and we pay Chromebooks. My question is, do, is it worth putting in another line item, even if it's not, even if it's two years out, just to get it on this thing?
Sure.
To say, hey, we wanna move to a different sort of-
I think anything that falls into that bucket.
Interactive.
Within five years.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, anything that's got a depreciable value to it. If it's a three-year span, if it's a five-year span, whatever it is, go to, put it on the capital plan, rather than trying to operationalize everything, right?
Well, yeah, it's not in here, but what I'm saying, it's not in here. But if you can just, what do, you know, kind of get, I guess, a, I don't know,
maybe it even just can say pricing to be determined.
It is in here, though. Wait a second. So we, we jump-
No, this is for repairs.
Okay, so all of this is repair, so you, the, the, this unit, you're just gonna repair this if it breaks.
Correct.
You're not gonna replace it with something else.
So if you see-
No, typically, again, the repair is the repair. So, yeah, we're either repairing it or replacing it with another projector.
With a like unit.
Correct, correct.
But that like unit is gonna be, again, depreciable over a certain period of time, right? You get a five-year lifespan out of the next one that you get. So I'm saying, maybe you're looking, looking at putting these things, rather than waiting until they, they all die, you're putting them on a replacement schedule, and you're going to the town and saying, here's my capital plan for IT, depreciable assets over a five-year span, this is what I'm gonna need each year. And you then come, pull all technology into that. So you have your PCs, your servers, you have your, 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 uh, equipment in the, the classrooms, right?
Yep.
Right, and so you can see it up, see, it's funded by the town.
Yep.
But we should put, add this to it.
But this is, all this is saying is, it's specific to Chromebooks, okay? So what I just wanna make sure is, let's, let's think about this holistically, and say, all the technology in the district, this is the schedule for replacement over a five-year period, that's the life that we're defining, that's how we're depreciating it on the books, and let's go each year and say, this is what we're gonna need each year, and, and just give them an estimate over a five-year period.
And it doesn't need to be specifically like, oh, it's like, you know, you know, um-
It's everything, copiers, you want, whatever you gotta put in there, that's an IT asset that you want to, uh, capitalize and depreciate.
But I, one, one huge word of caution on that. The more you cede to the town, it, it has to be a very fine line, because if we give it to the town, and we don't put some of these things in our budget, and then the town council and the Board of Finance and the first selectmen say, no, we're gonna move it into years two or three, then we lose it in that fiscal year.
Right, but we may not be able to fund it otherwi, in our, we can't fund it in our operating budget.
That's why we have to give them a five-year plan that's broken out by, okay, he, we know that, we know that we have, uh, we're buying this number of assets this year, so we know that three years or five years from now, we need to replace that fleet of assets.
I agree that we might think that, the Board of Ed might think that, but when we give that five-year capital plan to the town, if, God forbid, something happens to the bonding rating, interest rates go up, and the town doesn't wanna bond as much, if we give them and we say, in three years, we need this, in three years, we go to them, they may lose it.
But we're not budgeting for it in our operating budget now.
Right.
We're not for replacements, right?
We're not.
We can continue to budget for repairs, to, to hedge against what you're, what you're cautioning, Nick, I think.
Right. But right now, we don't budget for Chromebook replacements in our operating budget, it's, it, that's, uh, budgeted on the town side.
But are we, are we budgeting for any type of depreciable replacement at, at all? So we're not getting it at all?
No. No. No, because I just asked Bill, are we budgeting for any equipment or vehicles?
It's gotta be capitalized.
Right. Nothing is, is in the operating budget now.
In order to depreciate.
So then our, so then our capital plan, as you just said, needs to be more robust. I just, I get, for the few years I was on the town side, I saw it happen every year.
Right.
Oh, that was this year, well, you know, interest rates ticked up again.
Right.
You wanna, you wanna build a list, then there'll be a discussion, and the Board of Finance may say, no, you, you guys put this in your budget.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, or, yeah. Right, but right now, technology is now budgeted in our operating budget at all.
I'm, I'm talking more for you. I mean, I know the town meeting just approved it.
But these have never been discussed, I mean, Chromebooks and the other stuff have, so-
Right.
Somebody needs to surface this stuff.
Ag- agreed, and that's what I'm kinda trying to get to.
Well, we have a ton of, I mean, everything that's in your data center, you know, anything that's, that's, uh, deployed at each of the buildings, right? All of that technology needs to be capitalized, right, and depreciated, and so it's gotta be planned. And to, you know, I, we don't wanna have the, the town say, yeah, we gotta, we gotta defer this, but, you know, at the same time, if, if they wanna say, nope, uh, a laptop's gonna last you four years, not three, right? Then we, okay, then we depreciate it longer, and we, we sweat more life out of it, right? But, uh, if we're not, if we don't have all of this stuff in plan, and we're not putting it in an op, then we're, we're doing ourselves a disservice. And it, to, to guard against things like, we didn't get the money to buy the new stuff, so we're gonna have to, to sweat the old stuff a little longer, then we, that's where this operating line comes in to do the repairs.
I, I think this is all good conversation. If I can just rein us back into this one line item. If we're looking at, our history is thirty thousand dollars a year, and we're budgeted, you know, fifty-five, this is a line that we may have to come back to and say, are we leaving it, or are we taking ten or twenty thousand out of it? So just, I just put a note there that-
Right.
We may have to look, come back to this.
But Paul, on the other side, if you can kinda start also looking at that and putting something together-
Yeah.
So that, you know, um, that we can submit that for, as part of a capital-
Yeah, absolutely.
Plan, and what that is, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Even not just IT, but also, you know, larger-
Oh, no, no, right, I already have equipment, we need that, and some of it is there, but, yeah, IT, we need that too. Alright.
Can we go down to that bottom line?
Yes, culinary repairs.
Yeah, there's just the history on there? Sorry, Linda.
I'm sorry?
The, uh, the last line on that page, culinary repairs?
That's my line about a, it's a refrigerator that we've been repairing over and over again.
Uh.
Yeah.
So it's already been-
A lot of refrigerators in there are original to when the renovation took place, so a lot of them are starting to go to, uh, freezers as well. We replaced one a couple of years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the two thousand will cover a, a new one?
It'll, it's a repair.
Oh, okay.
That's for repair. Yeah, we priced out some new ones, um, and-
Systematic.
I'm gonna double that for the cheaper unit, that would be fine.
Ah, okay.
That's a turner would be.
Okay.
Not ours.
Right.
Alright.
Yeah, so leave, leave, leave it.
Yeah, leave that out. Alright, let's move on, technology-related repairs.
Looks, the same.
It looks, is same, so, alright. We will move on to rentals or leases, buildings. Everything looks for-
The first one I think we have to talk about, because I think we, you know, we discovered in the last, last meeting that, um, the alternative lease is gonna be paid out of the, uh, out of, um, special revenue.
Right, and if, that money is moving from Chalk Hill to this line, so you guys are gonna do a transfer there? Right?
Yep.
Okay. And so that alternative school's gonna go to the first line, forty-eight grand.
That's from the Chalk Hill.
And we're offsetting forty-five from the Chalk Hill line.
Yeah.
Is that, I, do you know, the Chalk Hill money that they're talking about right now?
Payroll.
That's in payroll taxes.
Was that payroll money that was, I think we talked about this a little bit today?
Yeah, I don't know where Frank ended up with that at the end of the day today.
Sound like that was like payroll, in the past, I had been kind of used as money to help offset payroll in other areas. So I don't know that that money is all there.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering too, it was on the cut list today, cause, um, as the conversation happened, uh, again, I've never been involved in budget, and neither was the payroll girl that did it before, it was Gabby always did the budget. Um, and when payroll rolls in, what happens is it overrides, um, any of the, the projections roll in and they override. So we're now thinking that we need that Chalk Hill line of the forty-five thousand to cover payroll taxes. Because for miscellaneous payments, not for salaried accounts, only the salary accounts roll in, so I, I don't know where Frank ended up at the end of the day, he was working with our payroll specialist today.
I know that, yeah, I know, he's in that work.
Alright, cause, yeah, cause I mean, cause you can che, follow up with that.
I think it's on that list. I, I don't know who has the cut list for today, but that's where it is. It's on the list. There was plus and minuses on that list that was submitted.
Can you see if there's?
And I don't know how he ended up.
Right, because I mean, payroll taxes should be very simple. It should be your salaries, um, obviously for the certified staff.
Right.
We're not contributing to the FICA social security, so there is not the six point two percent. But, um, for obviously Medicare, um, that would be covered.
Correct.
You're paying the one point four or five, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
And then, non-certified, you pay both, and then according to Frank, we don't pay the, the, the tax to SUDA. We pay as you go, so there's, so you're not having a payroll tax for SUDA, because you're not paying that insurance, whatever your rate is, it could be one point nine, it could be up to six point eight percent depending, and, I mean, I'm sure you're paying FUDA in there. Is that FUDA same as pay as you go too, or you don't know?
I honestly don't know, I've never been involved with payroll projections, so I, and budget, so I don't know. But one of the things that did come up today was that the payroll taxes on that line, we're thinking maybe it was put in there and carried over year to year, because it was covering for miscellaneous payments that were not part of the salaried tax line. So the taxes for miscellaneous payments, when they were adding up the numbers, they were saying that they were, they probably would need that forty-five thousand. But I don't know, at the end of the day, how it ended up.
Alright, cause, yeah, cause I know from the updated notes we got, it kind of just said, it's a com, it's complex to figure out the taxes.
From what I was told from the payroll specialist is that it's munis generated, so what happens is the salaried accounts, it corresponds, if it's certified, non-certified, it would be one point four or five percent, or the-
Right.
You know, the full amount, but it would generate automatically, but-
Right, usually, usually systems will just-
Correct.
Generate that and calculate that automatically.
But for salaried accounts, so the stipend pieces, the miscellaneous pieces are not adjusted the same way.
So they're not, so what you're trying to say is, they're not overriding it to make it correct, they're just putting a, like, dump off.
Correct, a number that the override doesn't fall into, an account that doesn't fall into, is basically what.
Of miscellaneous.
Oh, thank you.
I mean, do we have money in, I know we had a special revenue update a couple meetings ago, but do we have money in special revenue to cover this line this year and then next year budget it? Because if that's not the case, then this is a plus forty-eight K.
No, it's covered this year. We already have the villain for the current year budget, the forty-eight thousand for the rent.
Uh, I, so for the bud, upcoming budget year?
Upcoming twenty, next year's budget? No, no.
So there's not enough money in special revenue to cover the lease?
No.
Alright, so if you can just find out, because that then makes it ev, makes our budget even worse.
Yeah, I, I think it's in the packet today, as far as I know, that's what they were working on, but I, I don't know. I, I actually think it's on that cut list, the one that has the pluses and the minuses, that's what they were. I, I know it was on the screen earlier, and then-
Um, we move down to ice rink, John, I think you've covered this last time, is those fees going up, like?
Yeah, each up considerably this year. They helped down for a while, but they're also, I, uh, I'm in agreement with the, the parents association. As you guys know, they paid for all the ice time. I said I would increase the amount that we paid for the rental of the Lachlan. So our portion is pretty much all, you know, I can just two or three hundred dollars make a chip in on top of that.
Alright.
And it's safe this year, and next year is the same amount that we pay.
Alright, so here's my one complaint about ice hockey, okay? Um, I have a serious, well, I've already made mention that I have a serious problem with charging admission, but I have a serious problem with charging eight dollars a person in minute, uh, 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 admission, when their system doesn't work properly. So their PA system has been out and broken for a week, has not been repaired. I kinda finds it, like, difficult to pay for that. Shouldn't my money being paid make sure that that, that equipment is working properly at that ice rink?
We'll call Donna tomorrow.
Thank you. Cause we were told it's been out for a week, and there's no PA working for games.
Was that the lower one?
What?
Were you at the lower one?
We were at the upper one.
I'll let the upper one scatter, it was a little, frankly, yeah, I can't stay attention out of it.
Right. So, you know, you know, I, I understand most charge, but you know what, I have an expectation, if we're char, we're being, the families and parents are being charged, that their equipment is properly working, and it's not just said, oh, yeah, it's been broken for a week, we don't have equipment properly working. Thank you.
John, do we, do we bid that out? Did you say we, I thought you remember-
I'm sorry?
The, when you did your presentation, you said we bid out, or not bid out, but did, um, we negotiated rates on a multi-year basis?
Yeah.
And is that, uh, do you know when that comes up, with hockey specifically?
It's coming up, uh, we're probably going to negotiations early next year.
Okay.
Cause next year's the last year of that contract.
Will, will you be negotiating with other rinks, or, I mean, are we agreed upon the rink sets where we're gonna be?
That's the main one, but there are other things that are consideration, and we could bring in another rink to talk about it, it's definitely, you know, something.
I mean, I know there's other factors involved, but, but I just, just so we have an idea of, you know, what others charge compared to-
See, and I have other athletic judges who are paying.
Okay.
Alright, anybody has anything else on that? Alright, we will move on to rentals, equipment. Anybody have any really questions on this? Most of the notes kind of give you-
Explain it, yeah.
An expl, explanation of it, so I don't know if anybody has anything past that.
No, actually.
Okay. Rental equipment of computers. I have really, anybody have any questions on this?
Page, yeah, one thirty-two?
One thirty-three.
Thirty-three, yeah.
It just looks, okay. I think we're going into five thousand.
Well, what, what was the, why, why was the department looking to budget a hundred and seventy thousand dollars?
That was, uh, I'm pretty sure that was assuming that the- Chromebooks. We would be buying the Chromebooks, and then reduction was asking the town to buy, uh-
Okay.
Alright, so transportation. One of my, my question for preschools, do they only go a hundred and eighty days? I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a mistake.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on one thirty-four? Okay, one thirty-five, I just had a question on the jump in student, um transportation, student activity J. I'm assuming that's Jackie Hollow.
Yes.
Is that something, have we been expending more than what has been historical in there?
Doubled.
Yeah. Are we doing more things, Jack, back and forth?
I think it's actu- I think it's more actualizing the account, I think we ended up transferring monies. Uh when we were down in the seven, eight thousand dollar range, we ended up, as the year would come to a close, we'd end up transferring money.
Else to other accounts?
From other accounts into transportation, because at, you know, every year it seems like we have another reason that we're bringing a group of kids back and forth.
Okay. Alrighty. Anybody have any other questions on that page? One thirty-six. I don't have any, I don't have anything there, but I don't know if other people do.
No, that's con- contractual.
Yeah.
But just one thirty-six, the MASC alternative that is being budgeted to actual, I'm assuming?
Yes, yeah.
So this year was a, is that in another line somewhere, or is that, was that supposed to be in another, like, does that tie into lines like it has before?
You're looking at the eleven thousand this year for next year, yeah, I don't, I I, are you wondering why it's budgeted at twenty-one? I have no idea. I have no idea why it's budgeted that high now, but.
Yeah, it sounds like it must have been.
Yeah, it's, it's coming to actuals because nineteen, we have ten thousand three oh one on that line.
Yeah.
And with our encumbrances this current year, we have just about the same ten, almost eleven thousand, but close. Close to what we're budgeting.
Which budget eleven?
Yeah, eleven is.
Yeah. Okay.
They're all based on actuals.
Thank you. Reach, we had actuals, is that okay that we're having nothing? That's top of one thirty-seven, we had actuals of forty-six thousand and there's nothing budgeted?
I have a note that says reach line, need to sped line. Is on page one forty-one?
You have a note that says what page?
One forty-one.
One forty-one, thank you.
Down the bottom, transportation special ed system wide, nine hundred fifty thousand.
Okay, so that goes there. So that sped, so that sped, so I'm sorry, let me rephrase that, the reach moved that down to that line. Okay. Alright, anybody have any other questions there? Okay, let's move to one thirty-eight, the only one I had here about marching bands. Is that something new that we're just budgeting because uh, or is that because the, for the marching band to go to parades or something? Just checking. There was nothing at, in actuals twenty nineteen, so that's why I just asked.
I mean, I, Katrina and I worked on this stuff together, she used a three-year average.
Okay.
Always do the same events, this year because of the budget freezes, et cetera, we're gonna have to travel with the marching band. The band has gotten bigger, so we left the line in there.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you.
We had actuals in eighteen, nineteen, no, but we had eight hundred ninety-seven dollars in eighteen.
Okay, perfect, thank you, does anybody have questions on page one thirty-eight past that?
Just um, uh boys tennis transportation, seems to be tracking, it's gonna double in two years. Are we just, do we have a lot of?
It may just be who's, who's home, who's away.
Oh, just the scheduling?
Mm-hmm, John, is that just because of scheduling?
Boys tennis one, that, we can actually try to adjust the, what, it's not a three-year average, but what, we remember Wolf Park was under construction.
Ah.
So a lot of that three-year average is bumped up considerably by the amount we had this, of all the way matches and um we just say just amount of practices as well. Uh so we can decrease that a little bit.
Okay.
I wanna piece a, a heck of a lot, but you know, I, you know, cut it down a little bit.
So if we, if we brought it down to, you know, like twenty to fifty where it was last year's budget, is that enough?
Yeah, twenty to fifty's fine.
Okay, so if we can make that twenty to fifty?
Then it should go from there on, cause it's that one year long.
Okay, okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay, one thirty-nine. I really didn't, I didn't have anything really highlighted here, I don't know whether people did.
I didn't know.
Is everybody good on that page?
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright.
Close.
Yeah, let's move on to one forty, anybody have questions there? And again, John is mostly using a three-year average for these things, I think everybody's good there, we'll move on to one forty-one. How is that, anybody questions on this one?
I did not.
I did not either.
One forty-one?
Yeah.
There's a big line towards the bottom there.
Oh geez, sorry, yes, so we just moved, so one thing that got moved there um was that whole, what is, what was it again, forty-five? Forty-six thousand just.
The reach.
The reach just got moved there, which is forty-six K.
But this also had in the PowerPoint, didn't this have a lot of detail in it?
Yes, it did.
Yes.
If you still have that PowerPoint that we, when we did our presentation.
Yes.
It has all of the transportation costs, where we, and we did make a lot of adjustments in all four years for different companies that we've been using.
It's tab three in the big book.
What, what is it, tab?
Tab three in the big book.
The big book.
Budget resources?
About budget, I guess this, I put mine in one, so.
That's a good idea.
Go into the next page.
It goes up page one forty-two. Ah, here we go. Forty-one forty-two, this detail.
And the other services that we use for students.
So you're just budgeting in your presentation, you have a hundred and fifty one thousand nine hundred and one dollar increase just under transportation sped system wide contract increases to current transportation costs, so that's just based on what you have now.
Right.
So.
Yeah, increases, yes.
Right.
So that's, that one fifty is, is inclusive of that nine fifty, right?
Yeah, it, there's a slide in the.
Right, wait, I have the slide, that's what I'm just double checking.
And it shows all the minuses and pluses.
Mm-hmm.
But now, the, does, does the budgeted number, um, the nine fifty, does that account for any? Is there any increase in there for unknowns?
No, that's based on actuals.
So, if we have, that's based on actuals of students that are in the district now?
Yes.
So if there's move-ins, then that nine fifty goes up.
Linda, can you tell me what we've expended year-to-date, cause that one fifty-one is to budget? That increase that says one fifty-one, if you, that's the increase to the two, to twenty-one budget over the twenty budget, so I'm just trying to.
Right.
But if you look at it compared to two thousand nineteen, well, now you're talking, oh, like, four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Because there was the two seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar offset last year from the ten two forty-eight. That's why your actuals are lower last year.
Cause they hit it against that line.
Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand came off of the actuals last year, so if you have the five twenty-six plus the two seventy-nine, that's bringing your actual higher.
Alright, so what are we year-to-date?
This year, we have actuals of four thirty-nine, nine fifty-three, and an encumbrance of five eighty-eight. So we're already overspent by two thirty on that line.
Wow.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
But is there gonna be an offset like there was last year?
Well, it's not gonna be the ten two forty-eight, I don't know, are we doing excess costs? Not from there, are we doing tuition and, I don't know?
I think that nine fifty.
So that, so we're at the combines a million twenty-seven then, right now in that line. So can I just ask a question, is, so that is so I'm sorry, Linda, you said it was what, two thirty over?
Two thirty over.
Right now.
Yes.
Two thirty over, so when we talked about special ed being a total of three hundred thousand dollars over, two thirty is this, is that? That is.
Or is it in addition to that?
I'm a little.
Transportation is in, in that number when we talked about.
The three hundred?
Yes.
So it's two thirty of it is represented to, is attributed to?
Thirty as that number, but I can check that for you, um in my, when I do the update this morning.
Okay.
I could, I could let you know what that number is right now.
Right, cause, cause Linda's saying the actual is four thirty-nine plus an encumbrance of about five eighty-eight. So that works out to two thirty over what our budget is, like now I'm getting scared that two thirty is not.
I think that.
That mean the three hundred is, is not.
Actually like five hundred and something over.
I don't know, I'm getting a little concerned.
I know, and I think that nine fifty it, it, it's, we're gonna blow through it.
I, possibly, I don't know.
I mean, I think that should be like at one point one.
And, and it sounds like this is another one of those, we're up a hundred thousand because now we're properly budgeting.
Correct, but also the key thing about this nine fifty is this is against actuals today.
Hmm.
If you have move-ins, remember Kay was talking about, um, if you got one more and you.
We've already added that wrong line.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a big expense for the rest of the year because we already have the bus. Um so they're just charging us for the um, the para on the bus, because it's preschool, we have to prepare. So it's not, it's not that big of an increase, but we already started, we had to start that one.
I'm, I'm just kind of using that more as an example of.
Yes.
When one person looks.
Are we gonna get the security grant offset again this year though?
No, no, the security off, grants offset was money the state owed us that they finally paid. There is no more offset, they paid the security money they owed us.
Joe, do we, do you know if we have any grant money coming in this year, outside ECS?
Nothing I know of outside of ECS, um there's anything from security grant money that we put in last year, it's really minimal.
Well, my biggest concern is the three hundred inaccurate number.
I know.
If, if this is, if Linda's saying that right now we're in that account and it's two thirty over, well, we were told it's three hundred total for special ed, unless there's some accounts that have big significant decreases in it. I'm concerned that like, the three hundred may not be an accurate picture.
Another one we need to dive into.
Yeah.
But when Kay was doing her monthly updates, um, transportation was in that monthly update.
Right, okay, so transportation was in there.
Right.
And she was comparing it to what was actually budgeted this year, so maybe it is, so.
Sounds like it.
Let's hope.
That, that's fine, I just, I'm, just wanna flag this nine fifty. I don't think it's, I think it needs to go significantly up, because otherwise next year, we're gonna be sitting here again.
Okay.
Ha, but ha, can we look at why we have an actual of five twenty-six?
Because there was.
Oh, plus the two seventy-nine.
Right, you have to add two seventy-nine to that, so that's, the five twenty-six is because it was the two seventy-nine the town, the town transferred in, so it's really eight oh five was the actual. If you add the two seventy-nine to the five twenty-six, it comes to eight oh five.
Still, we're adding a hundred and fifty K to next year's budget, and we're already blowing past nine hundred fifty this year.
And we had money taken out of the requested budget last year, so.
It was cut.
Kay said that too.
Yes.
Okay, well, we can't cut request budget, obviously, if we're gonna exceed. So, what's the um?
It's happening on the front end.
That was the I told you so column.
Yeah, so, so, can we get like an, a projected actual for the rest of the year? Do, do, did you just figure that out or no?
Uh well, we, it, Linda just said it's four thirty-nine, five, nine fifty-three plus five eighty-eight, correct?
Encumbrance?
Five eighty-eight, eight seventy-eight.
Eight seventy-eight.
But that's not done.
Encumbered, right?
Well, we've encumbered everything we know.
Right.
Everything you know.
Yeah, to the end of the year, I mean, and again, if somebody else comes in.
To the end of the year.
Yeah, we've encumbered everything.
Right.
Okay.
But if.
How does that align with, I'm sorry, Christine.
I see, but if a new student moves in, that, yeah, okay. Is what are actuals for this year, how, how similar are they to what was requested for this year that got cut? Do we know, we might not know, right now. But just not right here, that's fine, that's fine, yeah, I just wonder if that's probably more in line with. I, I doubt the. How, how could the board cut two thirty, I mean, that's like, if there, even if you put the dollars in that was requested, you probably were still gonna blow through it.
Sure.
I mean, had people move in this year. Yeah, by, still by six figures.
So then.
But remember, not everybody who moves in is gonna need a high transportation. Just because somebody moves in, they may be doing, having services that we do at our schools and they're taking the regular bus. That's not an added expense.
I agree.
Right, so we, so, so not ev- that, that would be if somebody moves in and is outplace somewhere, you know?
I agree, but even if you take the, what's encumbered, what's been spent and what's encumbered, right?
Right.
A million twenty-three.
A million twenty-eight, eight thirty-one.
So you still need to increase this by six K.
But is this taken into account, darling, of the nine fifty, everybody that you know in the pipeline too?
Well, we have a couple, the ones that I talked about on Friday.
Yep.
Um and we haven't, we haven't worked into transportation as of yet, but um we, I will, I will
Yes.
Get a better figure for you.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, because that is an area of concern.
How many out of district students do we have?
Um thirty.
Thirty-six?
Yeah, we need to pick that up. Alright, so we'll need to pick that one back up.
Mm-hmm.
Um and stuff, next time. And then on one forty-two, I know I had a question regarding transportation CES and ACES because that um is up about eighty-five thou- eighty thousand? Linda, can you tell me what we've expended year-to-date there, please?
Nothing.
Hmm, we've expended nothing in CES, ACES, that line?
System wide?
We may not have gotten bills by then.
I'm sorry?
We may not have gotten bills yet.
Okay. And there's no encumbrances?
They come, yeah, I wanna say it comes late, I'd have to, I'd have to double check, I can look at it.
Perfect, but is that who you, so just to go back to the one eighty-five, that's who you currently have in the system now?
Correct.
Okay.
And the detail was on there.
Mm-hmm, yes, no, the detail's in there, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so let's get a forecast for the rest of the year.
Anybody have anything else?
The uh, life skills sped line, I'm assuming that's being budgeted back to actuals. Twenty thousand?
Yeah, that looks like.
Twenty to three, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, what we did on that line is we, we were able to combine um some of the field trips that we have for our life skills program and we combined um some of the buses, so.
To the tune of seventeen thousand, but you were able to save eight, uh seventeen thousand dollars in bus transportation?
Yeah, because the, um, we have some, it's very student specific, so I can.
Yeah. Got it. I have help needed on the buses. Got it.
And then we also on, um, the next page, if you look at um, the transportation um, for All-Star, we had, we had a save yesterday, so, and that was um, using so many of the All-Star buses for our district kids, so it was a save yesterday.
But that's where All-Star said we can't match what they can do, so, because we haven't tried.
Alright, anybody else have anything there?
Alright, I have a question. How many series re- the agenda says through?
Well, that, the agenda just covers everything.
Yeah, how far do we wanna go?
Uh, as far as everybody wants to go. Because again, we only have one more meeting and the next meeting, we have to vote on the budget.
I mean, should we be having another meeting this week?
If everybody's available.
I'm just-
I mean, cause the next meeting would be, the meeting would be our last one and then we have, we have to vote that night on the twenty-first.
Yeah, there's no way we're getting through transportation and supplies tonight though. I, I don't think.
I don't think so either. It's, it's-
So what would everybody be available for the rest of this week?
Well, Wednesday we have-
Wednesday, we have director finance interviews.
We missed the twenty-four hours for thir- for tomorrow.
We missed the twenty, right, so the-
So Thursday?
Thursday. Do we have a quorum for Thursday?
I can make it.
I'm not.
Alan, you?
Thursday's Monday.
I could do it.
Okay. Everybody's available for this?
That's the one day I can't come, Thursday.
Okay.
But one, two, three, four, you can't?
I don't know.
Right, we would have to have a quorum. Jerry is definitely still on vacation.
Six, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah, you have six.
So we, okay. So we do want, what time do we wanna start on that case?
Six thirty again?
Six thirty again?
That works.
Joe, if we can have Terry put a, um, a special meeting together and then just um, I can work with her on new boarding and stuff. It'll just be, just the whole budget stuff.
What time would you say?
Six thirty, please.
And then Monday will be a Tuesday.
No, Monday's off.
Tuesday.
Tuesday will be final adjustments and a vote.
Yeah.
And it has to be walked down by Thursday. Or driven down by Thursday.
Mm-hmm.
Not courier. Not courier.
Do we wanna, do we wanna lead on Thursday with the things that we talked about tonight where we need follow-up?
Yeah.
Okay. And close all that stuff out and then go on to the rest of it.
Yes.
Six thirty.
Yep, absolutely.
Joe?
I'm sorry?
We're gonna lead on Thursday with everything that we talked about tonight that we need follow-ups on, Lynda? And then um, we'll uh, we'll move on to the rest of it from there, I guess.
There was also a follow-up. Something from the one thousand series.
Right, there are.
There was a document uh, somewhere.
Right.
I don't, we wanna, I'm just saying.
Right. Right, cause there are some things that we still need to go back over, like the courier.
I don't think that was, I think that was in our weekly.
Well, we, the ones we got in our weekly this past week were questions from the sixth. So that one really started with the FICA Medicare calculations, then talked about alternative ed, the pension increase, the maximum allowable unemployment benefits.
The Brown and Brown, the first thing we started with, like you asked about the Brown and Brown numbers, the Brown and Brown numbers.
Oh, perfect. So the Brown and Brown, that's for Karma. So I-
She'd asked about um, Chuck Patricioni would do a, a historic-
Right. So then I guess the question is, oh my gosh, then why is dental going so high then?
I couldn't figure out.
Payroll was turned off, um, the employer portion from, for six payrolls. So money was being paid out of the medical reserve to pay for dental. Medical and dental were always looked at as a combined effort. Entity, yes, good word for it. So it was being paid out of medical reserve. We had word from Chuck on that. So the actual numbers, if you look in the ledger for munis, are gonna be lower because the employer piece that comes through payroll was not being hit for six payrolls last year.
That's how I was questioning dental last week, remember? What didn't seem-
And it's happened before in previous years as well, that it was not being funded out of the Board of Ed's budget because it was being paid out of the reserve accounts. And there was a whole analysis that Frank actually had me do copies today of all the medical and the dental reserve. And there's copies for everybody and you could see the transfers going from the dental to the medical and dental and medical being paid out of the medical reserve account. So there's all copies. Frank has copies all over.
Not in, not what we have. They're probably still over there somewhere.
And, and we have the Brown and Brown numbers have the actual numbers.
So those are the actuals, the five forty, the five fifty-three and this five fourteen.
Yes.
So then the two eighty-one is wrong because the mo- some of it got hit to the medical reserve.
Correct. I, I, I don't wanna say it's wrong. It just was being paid out of the reserve accounts.
As opposed to hitting the actual operating budget.
So what's the budgeted, up, the budget number for next year for-
Five twenty-three, which is reasonable then.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Are there more handouts over there?
There are. I'm not exactly sure.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, there's more handouts.
Yeah, there's a ton of handouts that Frank-
Look at them and-
Yeah. Frank had us run a whole slow reports.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we, you wanna finish this section tonight?
Yeah, I think we should, we need to because we're never gonna get through everything.
Then we need to get a wrap-up of where we're at with all the adjustments we've made too.
Right, cause we have made, you know, some adjustments. Some I've added myself, so I mean, I don't know if I'm, you know.
We've had some cuts.
What?
With, there were some little minor cuts.
Some minor cuts, but we've cut other things in the one thousands.
Mm-hmm.
La- I mean, last time we cut nineteen thousand and something out of um, out of the two thousands.
We're gonna need to see where we're at.
Yeah.
Right. Mm-hmm. But yeah, I think we definitely need to finish, finish transportation tonight.
Okay.
And stuff to leave, you know? And quite honestly-
There's a lot of changes in that because that had, that held when we were looking at that pie a long time ago. A lot of the special ed was in transportation and we were talking about reaching out to freight.
And I mean, quite honestly, if you kind of look ahead, the enterprise suspense, there's nothing there. That section is one page and all it is, is getting rid of the three hundred thousand dollar plug. So there's really nothing to cover. That's the nine thousand.
So we can knock out the nine thousands tonight?
Well, there isn't anything. Yeah, you can knock it out because there's nothing there.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, that would leave the six thousand, which is pretty big. Seven thousand, which is equipment. Um, the eight thousand, which is bonds. And that's really it. So I mean, I would imagine that we would be able to get through.
That on Thursday.
That on Thursday.
Get a wrap-up of everything.
Get a wrap-up of everything so that on Monday, we know what our adjusted number is.
Alright, can I still, on Thursday, I have plans that I can't.
That's fine.
I can't, but can I still get the handouts of whatever you're, you're getting caught up on with that for Thursday so I can go over it? Between Thursday and, and Tuesday's meeting? And there's also, I think, de- decisions that the board has to make about, you know, that, the sped transportation line. I mean, I know we're gonna get more info on that, but you know, that could be sixty, seventy, eighty, a hundred K. I mean, there's still like, you know.
Right, we don't, right, right. That's why we're saying we need to get the update on all that.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, we were on one forty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Magnet school grant. It's like a negative eight thousand, nothing budgeted. One forty-three.
One forty-three. Second one down.
Yeah, we usually receive a magnet school grant every year and it's applied to that line. So it's, it's a negative because it's money coming in from a grant.
Right, so there's nothing budgeted for next, for next year.
Do, do we budget that amount in case we don't get the grant?
Uh, there's nothing budgeted in the current year as well, right?
But we do normally get something then?
Yeah, they're just applying a credit towards that line.
Yeah, we usually just put it as a credit towards the transportation line, so I don't, I don't know in the past. It doesn't look like they've ever budgeted on that line before, so.
Let's do-
I don't know.
And did we get a credit in two thousand eighteen and seventeen, please?
Always gotten something.
We've always gotten something?
And eighteen, we got sixteen thousand nine hundred. I think it's based on how many students are magnet students in this year, I believe. We got more money back in, uh, seventeen, we got thirty-three thousand. I think it's based on student.
Right, but I think we have less students now going to magnet. It's significantly down.
Significantly down, yeah, exactly, so.
So the question is, do we budget some sort of credit there?
No, probably not. Because it could, it could go away and we-
Well, no, we do not know how many kids we have. We have kids at magnet schools.
So is it a rate?
I, I don't know.
And I don't know if it's guaranteed or I, I honestly don't know.
Right. Not enough detail to figure out one way or another. Once we knew it was a rate per student, then you could say.
And that it was guaranteed, which it's not.
Right.
So I would say it's gonna help offset.
I would leave it blank.
If it, if it happens, if it occurs. Okay. Then let's move on. Anybody have any other questions there?
I'm assuming that the, the late bus and the stu- the sped aids are all being budgeted to actuals, cause I mean, those are-
Big decreases, yeah.
Yeah.
I saw that.
And fuel, oh, fuel's on a contract.
I mean, I don't wanna put us through the decrease.
No, they're based on actuals.
Okay.
So is there any particular reason why in the current, that you know of, that in the current budget year, they're so out of whack? Or is it, is it pulling other lines from other places like we've been doing?
That, I don't know. I couldn't tell you.
Alright.
Alright, but as long as we're budgeting to actual, I think that's the key.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else before we move on to one forty-four? Alright.
Uh, yeah, just darling, we're good with age on the um, there's a big decrease on student aid on one forty-three. Is that because we've been using ed bands and-
Yes, yeah. And that, that's what I had said, had pointed out earlier, that we had a decrease in that line. Because we're not using All-Star as much and when we go to um, some of the other um, transportation services, the aids are in, in price.
Okay. Alright, we'll move on to one forty-four. That's the, the big giant one there is that big giant credit. Which has transportation non-public. Does anybody know idea what that was, right?
Well, it said, the note says nineteen twenty FY plug.
Yeah, we just, we just, we don't know what it was. I don't know what it is. We found that we did the budget.
Was that one seventeen? They told, we, they told us about-
That's the one seventeen.
This is the one seventeen.
Yeah.
This is it.
It was another found plug number.
Yeah.
Right. But we don't know what it's really attributed to and it's hitting our non, our transportation non-public school account. When we would use to, have to, that would be the line where we would budget for busing kids to St. Jude.
But it's corrected for next year.
It's corrected for next year.
Yeah, we knew this one. Right, but it shows up as a-
Current.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Alright, I think, anybody have anything else there? I think everything else is, one forty-five. I don't really have anything there. One forty-six, I think we talked about last time.
Yeah, offset with page ninety-four.
Right, the offset from ninety-four. So I don't think we need to discuss that again. That was the offset one that we were moving. The same thing with one forty-seven. And um, one forty-eight too, right?
And one forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
And one fifty.
Yep. That was all rolled together.
Is that what it is?
No, those were all, they re, um, that was from last time where it offset with um, page ninety-four where they redid how they re-budgeted for it because they're not splitting it up anymore.
They're matching it to the bill, is what they're trying to do.
And we had a handout from Frank last time.
Yes.
Yeah, we talked about it.
It's in this question, it answers this week as well.
Yeah, we talked about that.
All these breakdowns of the question.
Yeah, and that was all set. Um, insurance into scholastic sports, one fifty-one. That looks like it's just, just budgeting to actuals. Um, one fifty-two is blank. Um, one fifty-three, my only, my, I have a question there regarding the first one, which is postage mailing because we had an actual in twenty nineteen, but nothing budgeted in twenty or twenty-one.
That has a note at the bottom. Combine the two accounts from postage.
Okay. Alright, so then I guess that's good.
But do we, I mean, I guess, I don't know who this is for, but postage is up for any, I feel like we're doing so many more things electronically that-
A lot of it's sped related.
Yeah.
Oh.
And a lot of it has to not go electronically.
Yeah, you can't send it out.
If you have mandated amount of time. Do you know what we've spent in year to date in that line? Or I guess in both of, I don't know if you're expanding from the top two.
Looks like they're just combining it now.
System-wide line has eight thousand, two thirty-five spent, five thousand encumbered for potential.
Okay.
PO and the, I don't know what the top one.
Right, so that could go up. That's, you know, that's thirteen thousand two hundred.
It's right there.
Yep, right there.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that's something the state could look at, letting that go electronically so they don't bankrupt all their districts. The state could make that, where we could just send that stuff electronically instead.
Above us. We have no control over that. Alright, one fifty-four, that just looks like telephone is just being budgeted to actual. On that one.
Yep.
And then the same thing with telephone. I mean, one of them is system-wide internet access. That says updated contract for higher bandwidth.
Yeah, that was uh, the upgrade we did at the alternative school. They had a cable modem, uh, which was a really slow connection. Our internet service provider doesn't do upgrades to just the cable modem, so it was a fiber connection.
Okay.
And also, uh, central office telephone. There's a seven thousand, seventy-five hundred dollar increase in the current year budget. And we're continuing that thirty-two K into next year. Is that uh, go ahead?
Is that top line, or is that top?
Second line, second line.
Thirty-two thousand.
Yeah.
That's been relatively, I don't know what the prior years have been. That's typically been, the budget was thirty-two thousand. I don't know if there's stuff in here that hasn't been billed yet for the telephone.
It looks like this current year, we have thirteen thousand dollars spent, eighteen thousand dollars encumbered, which makes the thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Last year, we spent twenty-four thousand. Year before, we spent thirty thousand, eight forty-four.
Okay.
That's pretty close.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, we'll move on to one fifty-six. Again, that just looks to actual. One fifty-seven.
Now, this one, I had asked a question.
Right, what, what is it regard to the advertising human resources?
The um-
Business office.
Yeah, there was a, yeah, the, the nineteen actuals compared to- Yeah, there was a, yeah, the the nineteen actuals compared to this year's budget had like a nine hundred percent increase.
Right.
And the answer was, um, the B O E has not gone out to bid for a few years, the new B O E policies now give clear guidance on bidding procedures and formal paid bid legal notices are anticipated.
Okay, but that's a good one with the one before, the advertising business office, anybody know what that is?
That underneath it has the no bid, bid advertise, I think that's the legal bids they were, uh, planning on.
But that.
We're doing less bidding now, because we're we're leaving it up to the superintendent for anything under fifty K or so, or five K. Or something, we we changed the.
I feel the rationale was that, yeah, fifty thousand, yeah, it was fifty thousand, uh, but I know they I don't know, I don't remember what the, uh, the rationale was there.
Linda, was anything budgeted in that advertising business office in any other year or?
It's been budgeted every year, but we have had no expenditures since, we didn't have eighteen, nineteen for current year expenditures.
Okay.
Seventeen, we spent sixty-two dollars, sixteen, we spent four thousand seven seventy-eight.
And buy for the turf field.
I say turf field, I bet.
That's probably why.
Right.
I don't know what we have that would be going out to bid, but.
I don't think anything.
We don't have anything now, right?
Take out the two thousand?
Yeah, because.
You could leave five hundred dollars just to create something.
I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing that we would be expending next year on the capital plan, the next one up would be twenty-one, which would be the roof from Monroe L. And the, uh, the H B A C equipment at central office, so there would be nothing going out to bid next year, so I say take that two grand out.
Totally out, or you still want five hundred? Totally out, or leave five hundred?
Maybe five hundred.
I would do five hundred.
Had the other year, we used four hundred.
Yeah, let's leave it, so then the other one is then regards to legal notices for bidding.
What should, what should we, what amount should we leave in there for, do you guys think four hundred or five hundred?
Five hundred, but if legal notices for bidding purposes and we're not sending anything out to bid, do we need the whole fourteen hundred?
Fourteen hundred is different, that's actually H R, and that's, um, seven hundred is to the rest of the lines for C T REIT postings for job positions.
Okay.
As well as five hundred dollars for Indeed and two hundred dollars for LinkedIn.
Then we should leave that, thank you. Alright, one fifty-eight, there's nothing, so we're good.
What, she's making it easy?
One fifty-nine, if that just again, looks like we're budgeting towards, um, actuals, so I think we're good there.
Actuals.
Alright, tuition magnet, this one I have highlights up the whole entire picture.
Start with the top line?
I guess start with the top one. Darlene, are you?
Actuals are doubled in a, yeah.
Yeah, so Darlene, you're budgeting to all of these different.
Not the virtual high school.
Oh, this is?
The first one is virtual high school, that program that, the high school kids take classes online, classes that aren't offered here, I don't know if that's, Jake, I don't know if that's also where we are taking money for, right now?
Yeah, I don't have any money, but Katrina budgeted to actual, we spent over the last couple of years, the increase of our online usage of programming for credit recovery, we added a platform called Play-Doh that we're using for summer school.
Summer school.
A summer school is generating revenue, but it's not hitting this line, the revenue goes into the.
Special revenue?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, that number's higher, but I think we're actually getting some money back on the other end.
Okay.
Current year, we already have actuals of fifty-five hundred and encumbrance of thirty-two, thirty-two seventy-five, so we have over eight thousand dollars.
Tuition vo- vo- uh, for Trumbull, the vo.
The voag.
Yeah. So that's going up a lot, is that because we have more students there?
Yeah, we could, uh, from what I, from what I saw, we have ten, we're projecting like ten students there, and each of them is, uh, like it it shows in the note, it's at six thousand eight twenty-three per student.
Okay.
So that could prob- I see the forty-nine, four nineteen from nineteen actuals, but it's probably an increase in rate and it could be an increase in students, which is like.
Is it really an increase in students, I thought they had like a limited number of students per town that could go in?
At Trumbull voag, yeah, I mean, but I don't know, I mean, it'll be interesting, we could find out.
I think in the, yeah, I think in the book, um, uh, in the original budget book, there should be a pa- I think there was a page in there that, um, showed each individual, uh, breakdown.
Yep, I think there.
There is, but that doesn't have the max, I think Shannon's asking.
Yeah, I don't know about the max, how many students.
I would, I had heard years ago, when Pat wasn't, was, I think it was ten, if I'm, I mean, it was a while ago, but I thought it was, I thought ten was the max, so I'm just, they may have increased their rate, but my guess is maybe not an increase in students.
I mean, I couldn't have.
Unless you say maybe ten is the max, and they're saying that's the max, it will be like ten. I think, I think that's all they will allow, that's what I think. I think ten is all they will allow and have allowed, I think.
There is a, there is a max.
Which makes sense, because.
Yeah, you can't have.
Can't have, I mean, for Eddie that wants to go.
Right, it's not. We only have, everybody's like allocated.
I'll be honest, it seems high, because I remember we used to get the list from Johnny Howo, when I was at math, how many kids are not attending Massacre, and who's going to craft and whatever, and there weren't.
Right. I thought there was a a sheet for that, but I don't see it.
It's gonna be multiplied out by four, that's only eight.
Oh, that's right, because you have kids at, it's not all one year.
Four years, yeah.
Yeah, it's probably the pretty close stock.
Okay.
Actuals are usually up in the forties, higher forties, and then fourteen and fifteen, they were way higher, fourteen was sixty-four thousand eight hundred, fifteen was fifty-five thousand eight twenty-eight, but otherwise, they've been around forty-seven thousand for actuals.
I think that.
Forty-nine left.
I mean, there could be fifteen thousand dollars in there, I think that needs to be.
We need to know how many kids are really there.
We didn't get the bill yet this year either, so I can't.
I'll find out how, how many kids are there now.
Is Maria, did you say that there is ten kids there right now?
I wanna say yes, um, but I need to double check.
So, so if there's a various, if if ten's the max, maybe not, maybe we're not using all ten of our spots some years, possibly.
Maria's gonna look up, she thinks she has it.
I think, I'm not sure if I brought it with me.
That's okay, we can.
We could look down.
Yeah.
Okay.
It might, I might have read something that the state might incre- like the state was giving them a certain amount of money for that voag problem, program that they helped them build, and then I think the state decreased, so they might be, there's a very good chance they might be increasing rates.
I think everybody just wants to know that if this is not ma- based on the max, but it's based on actual.
Yeah, yeah, agreed.
I think that's what the question is.
Yeah.
For all of these, like twenty-four, well, is that max, we can have twenty-four, so we're budgeting what the whole max is, or are we budgeting for what we have right now?
Currently, we have ten.
Okay.
And this sixty-nine, uh, six, excuse me, sixty-eight twenty-three is a contracted number, I mean, that.
Um, I wanna say, I have to double check, but I wanna say that we base it on last year's number, what they charge us per student.
Okay. So ten is really the actual number, so then that's correct. Alright, how about, do you have aquaculture there too, do you have all of them, Maria?
Um, aquaculture, we currently have eighteen. Only one twelfth grader is in there, and we bait, I think we put twenty-four students because you have a higher number of ninth graders that go to aquaculture.
Okay.
Yeah, with only one senior classroom.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, okay, perfect, thank you. Alright, um, next one is six to six.
RCA.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's, that was, I kind of glossed over that, because that kind of was exactly the same, so the next one that jumped out to me was
Right.
six to six, sorry.
So which one are we doing?
Six to six.
Six to six. Six to six, we currently have seven students.
Okay. Alright. Anybody have any other questions? So those are actually what budgeting the actual students we have. Um, one sixty-one. We're not budgeting anything, so we can just move on. One ninety-nine, I'm sorry, ninety-nine.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two.
Sorry, I'm looking for the period ninety-nine, is what I'm looking at. I think we're getting late, because now I'm getting like.
A little punchy.
Yeah.
Talking top of one sixty-two?
Yeah.
So that is, um, those are students, um, we have twelve students, um, in public, um, placements, um, five are in transition, and five in transition program, so that's a total of seventeen students in that. And this number, this nine hundred number is, um, the gross number. So, right, and then we're taking excess losses.
The two twenty-six.
Yep.
And the nineteen actuals have two, have two twenty-six from the ten dash two forty day, but then if you add the two twenty-six to the five eleven, that's seven thirty-seven, but then why do you have that huge drop off in the current fiscal year?
The five eleven?
No, you have the five eleven plus two twenty-six.
Why would we only budget five sixty-five?
Yeah, like unless it's in another line somewhere.
Well, again, that would probably, is that net of the excess cost?
Yeah, the two twenty-six is for last year's actuals, but excess costs will be hitting that line, the tuition sped public and tuition sped private, to reduce this current year's expenditures.
So that's the one eighty-one, so what you're seeing it as, they're not netting it into the nine fifty-four, they're putting the one eighty-one on a totally separate line.
Oh, on the bottom.
Where you're looking at the five sixty-five of the five eleven already is net of the excess cost, so if you do the, um, if you do the roughly, the nine fifty-four minus the one eighty-one. That's seven seventy-three.
Got it.
So there just seems to, they're just putting it on a totally different line, so you can see the two separate now. Alright. Anybody have any other questions on this? Tuition private. Yet again, they're doing the same thing here. They're putting the excess cost on a totally separate line.
Minus the six, yeah.
So that you see it's separate, so.
And that includes, um, twelve students and the seven.
I'm sorry, I.
That includes twelve students and the seven.
Okay.
I mean, it's still a big increase though, right? You take out the six hundred thousand excess cost.
It's eight oh six.
You're still, you're still, uh, a hundred and fifty grand over what you were last year.
Right, but this is based on actual right now, right? These are the kids that are currently, yeah, so this is actuals. Anybody have any other questions there? One sixty-four is a zero. Um, one sixty-five. Anybody have questions there?
No.
No?
No.
One sixty-six.
Is that top line reduction because of? Looking at the note here.
Um, that was spread out, because for some reason, the travel was hitting, um, both, the superintendent, assistant superintendent.
Oh, and the same.
Three thousand under.
Gotcha.
Three thousand below.
Okay.
Anybody have anything here? What's the A B services travel, three thousand? It's the last one.
My gut. There's been no activity there, you, uh, I had a note here to, uh, possibly zero that out, I had a question, is, is that for bond, the travel around district?
Is that like mileage or something?
Which page is that?
The page one sixty-six.
One sixty-six.
I think that was on our cut list, I believe.
No, that should not be budgeted.
Alright, zero that out then.
I'm pretty sure it's on the list already.
Every dollar counts.
Exactly.
Has anybody think been spent out of travel superintendent out of district? It just seems like for the first time we're budgeting this, and nothing's been expended, nothing was even budgeted last year.
Where are you, one sixty-seven?
Yes, please, sorry.
Second one down?
Yeah, second one down. This is the last page in this section, and then I think we're calling it a night.
I lost connection.
Oh, no.
Sure you did.
The last page, I lost connection.
There's no money to repair the.
But we don't know what time it is, so we can be here all night.
We got it, yeah.
Right.
So superintendent out of district, well, there is an actual this current year, four seventy-eight twenty-seven. So.
What is it?
And nothing has been expended since before that?
Eight twenty-seven, uh, no.
And how is that different from the page before with the three thousand, like?
The other one's contractual, this is I have district.
It's a, it's a contractual piece, the other pieces for, um, it's a monthly stipend for in-district travel, um, going to Massacre, the truck, they'll find out.
Right, that's the three thousand, the line up.
And then this is.
Yes, but this is, I gotta go to Mystic for the cap's conference, or Fairfield County Superintendent's Association, something like that.
Conferences. Gotcha.
I don't know why nothing was budgeted.
Yeah, or expended before.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Joe, what do you think a reasonable number would be for that thousand?
I think a thousand is reasonable.
I mean, just.
Or just leave it, fine.
Yeah, it's probably not worth it.
Yeah.
For the two hundred. I would just leave it, now, how come all the other ones, like all of a sudden, are, there's things expended in the whole admin things? Like, all of a sudden now, we seem to be bu- we're budgeting for those, but nothing seems to be expended, not that they're large amounts.
On travel, I had a question, I I put a question in too. I don't know, if our principals are putting in for travel. Well, that's what, that's what that is.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah, like the travel admin step.
Just don't put in.
You better put in, it'll take you out.
Says the short timer.
What does everybody wanna do, just leave it?
I think it should stay, because rightfully, they they shouldn't be putting in.
Okay. Then we will, it shall stay. Other than that, unless all the people have, I didn't really have anything else in here. Anybody else?
Everything else seems it's like it's in line, yeah.
Alright, so then, we will, then next time, we really have to just cover, um, really, the six thousands are gonna be the bulk of it, I'm gonna go with that, probably the bond miscellaneous is probably not really gonna be very time-consuming, and hopefully, the equipment either, there's not that many pages, so I think that Thursday, we should be able to get through all of those, and then we will be able to have some roll-up of what we've done.
True, yeah.
Throw up and where we are. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Yeah, we need to see where we are after going through all of this, so that we have a number, and then we can go from there.
Right. Okay. Alright.
Voting Tuesday?
We have to vote, um, we have to vote on Tuesday, the twenty-first.
Alright, so are we gonna be able to get a roll? Alright, so are we gonna be able to get a roll, a roll-up of everything? For Tuesday?
Well, you already have a cut list, right?
My only question is, because we, there were a lot of, there were changes proposed tonight, there were follow-up questions, and I just wanna make sure that we have enough runway to do all that, you guys are comfortable with, with that stuff.
Questions tonight, I'm, I'm comfortable. Um, the stuff that was done before, I don't know, I mean, quite frankly, I'm gonna have to start shifting through this, this stuff, yeah.
So we're meeting Thursday?
We're meeting Thursday.
Yep.
We gotta get agenda out tomorrow.
Wednesday's director of finance.
Wednesday's director of finance.
Interviews Thursday.
We cannot put those off.
Yeah. No, agree. And then we're back Monday.
And then we're back Tuesday.
Tuesday, yeah, Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday, there's a holiday Monday. Okay. Yep, so, thank you, don't have a suck.
Yep.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all in favor?
Um, was there something, what was the last item on your agenda for?
Closing remarks.
No, we don't have any.
We're good?
We're good.
Okay.
Yep.